Okay, welcome back. Our next item on the agenda is our first business item, item C1, Status Update and Evaluation of Conditional Consent of Landowner Performance Pertaining to the Request for Proposals Award on Lease Site 87 and 88, 87, 88 W, Located at 833 in Barcadero, Off the Hook to the TLC Family Enterprises and Council Direction as Deemed Appropriate. Eric, you going to start us off on this?
I am.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Irons and Council. There it goes, all right, clicker's working. So, our purpose here tonight is, from our direction from the City Council back in August of this year, is provide the Council an update on the Conditional Consent of Landowner Agreement, our approval that was given to TLC Family Enterprises to Redevelop Lease Site 87, 88, commonly known right now as Off the Hook. We also like to obtain Council's concurrence that TLC's performance is sufficiently responsive to the Consent of Landowner, the COL, be a few acronyms in here as we go. The COL issued in August and also to the direction given to staff and what TLC was needing to provide. And also provide further staff input and direction as appropriate if we get any changes we want to make and course corrections along the way. So, we're recommending to Council that review the update and the materials presented, obviously, receive TLC in public input, and then consider deeming the performance of TLC to date as responsive to Consent of Landowner, the COL. Couple of alternatives, we could revoke the COL as non-responsive, in other words, it didn't measure up, performance didn't measure up to what the requirements were, and direct staff to work with Central Coast Investments. On their proposal, Central Coast Investments, as you may recall, was one of the three respondents we had to this RFP process when we put it out last year, and consideration of a new Consent of Landowner with CCI, Central Coast Investments. Or the second alternative is revoke the COL as non-responsive and direct staff to reissue a new request for proposals and go through the proposal process over again for redevelopment of the lease site. If we were to go down that route, we would need input and direction on what, if anything, to do different from the original RFP process. And then if either of these two alternatives are chosen, we'd need direction on where to take the lease site after its current expiration in March 2018, is our current direction from Council, assuming TLC continues forward, is to work with them on a short-term lease after the lease expires. From a fiscal impact standpoint, no real change from current with the retail-only revenues that are being realized at the site unless additional sublease or other operations are established between now and the near future. Currently, we're getting about $30,000 a year total rent from that site, not really hitting percent rents anymore, so unless something changes, we don't expect any changes until redevelopment. After redevelopment, if it's redeveloped as currently proposed, both positive fiscal impact in sometime '21, '22, after the site's redeveloped, expected increase $10,000 to $80,000 per year to the Harbor Fund from current levels, and from current levels, I would say, caveat that historic levels, the lease site revenues now are down over historic levels, so $10,000 to $80,000 per year from historic levels, depending on the terms negotiated in the lease, of course. There will also be positive fiscal impacts after redevelopment to the General Fund, T-Bid, Measure Q, increased restaurant and retail sales from existing, and new TOT revenue from the hotel that would be established. And, of course, the negative fiscal impact during redevelopment, I would anticipate some negative rent structure would be established when the site goes into redevelopment and there's nothing there. From background standpoint, again, on August 22 of this year, Council approved the Conditional Consent of Landowner, which is Attachment 1 to your staff report, based on their revised proposal that they worked on over about a year. That COL has performance and timeline criteria that TLC must meet. The first performance criteria was a November 1 deadline to submit several items, which are items 1 to 4, which we'll get through in the Consent of Landowner document. And the next bullet point I got a little mixed up on, but due to some significant city personnel changes, mainly the City Manager and City Finance Director, TLC asked for an extension of the November deadline, November 1 deadline for the financial input materials, business plan materials, because they wanted to run those by the new permanent staff that were on, and so Marty LaMalle, the interim City Manager, granted about a 15-day extension, so the extension, I think, was November 13th was deadline for the second set of materials, and they did get all the materials in on time. From the COL performance items, items 1 through 4, evidence of available financing, number 2, professionally-prepared business plan that contained industry-standard elements of such a plan. Item 3 is a professionally-prepared marketing plan with industry-standard elements, and item 4 was Centennial Parkway Project Coordination with Adjacent Leaseholders and Financial Commitment to Elements of that Plan should that project move forward into the future. So, again, all the materials required for submission in items 1 through 4 were submitted on time by TLC. The full business plan is not in the staff report because much of the items in it are proprietary and confidential in nature. You'll probably hear me using the term trying to thread the needle. We've attempted to honor that confidentially while still providing staff and the public sufficient data and evidence appropriate to demonstrate that the plans were professionally-prepared and had industry-standard elements and that they essentially passed muster. So, really, what I'm calling this is sort of a 15,000-foot mid-level look. We're not down at treetop level, looking at every number, looking at every input, scrutinizing all methodology. We're up at 15,000 feet, just making sure that it's, it has the necessary elements, the key assumptions are sound, the basic finances are sound, and their financial consultant is a professional and knows what he's doing and relying on him to put the plan together and defend it. So, the items 1 through 4, Consent of Landowner items 1 through 4, again, item number 1, evidence of available financing acceptable to the Finance Director and City Attorney, that's the language straight out of the COL, and according to the COL, that could include letters of interest or LOIs, or commitment from accredited financiers, or proof of sufficient cash reserves, or some combination thereof. For TLC, 2 LOIs were submitted, 2 letters of interest were submitted from traditional lenders, and 1 from a private or quote-unquote "hard money lender." The basics of the financing is TLC is anticipating about a $2.7 million loan. They're going to bring about $1.2 million to the table when it comes time for construction. The loan-to-cost ratio, meaning the ratio between the loan to the cost to build a project is about 75%. The loan-to-value ratio, which is the ratio between the built-out value of the property to the loan service is about 65%, industry standard being in about 65% to 80% range. And the debt service coverage ratio, meaning the ratio between revenues generated on the site and expenses and whatnot to service the debt is about 1.62 right now. Credit standards for small businesses typically are something at 1.15 and higher. I'll throw the caveat on there, I'm throwing a lot of financial terms around. I'll point to my Finance Director across the hallway over there, across the aisle there, she was really the brainchild in really evaluating most of these financial issues, so relied heavily on her, and the City Attorney as well, and the City Manager, so it's been a real, and Scott from Community Development as well, it's been a joint project evaluating all these things. So, the business plan revenues, expenses, cash flows, cash balances, projections were generally reasonable to support the anticipated LTCs, the loan-to-cost, the loan-to-value, and the debt service coverage ratios. The numbers are reasonable, their revenue projections were reasonable, their expenses had all the normal parameters accounted for, for the most part. Startup and construction costs and business expenses seemed generally reasonable, and all the normal parameters in that regard seemed accounted for. TLC demonstrated evidence of combination of current cash in the bank, asset liquidity, and future savings capacity to meet their $1.2 million come 2020, 2021. Had basically $240,000 in the bank, quarter million dollars in the bank, half a million dollars in liquid assets that they can convert over if needed, and then future savings demonstrated from Sri Hansen's 4 retail outlets, 1 More Bay, 1 Avala, 1 over in Hawaii, actually 2 in More Bay, 1 at Rosa's Landing, 1 at the current site, 1 in Avala, and 1 over in Hawaii, to bring, to bear approximately $1.2 million when time comes in about 2 years. Sri Hansen had excellent credit rating, excellent being in quotes, because that's according to the 3 credit reporting agencies, that's where it fell. No credit rating reported for Travis Lee, we did get credit reports on him. Did have some negative flags in his credit reporting, most of them were construction-related, it was a default, construction-related default from the industry downturn and recession back in 2008 that mostly accounted for the negative reporting in his credit. In this phase of the process, $2.7 million financing looks likely, provided TLC can bring even $1.2 million to the table and financiers are willing to finance come the time. And, again, at this point, short of having a whole bunch of money in the bank or a long track record of development, you know, more financial horsepower, so to speak, it's about all you're going to get from a financer at this point. As far as the business plans, so item number 2 on the CO, professionally-prepared business plan with industry-standard elements, they prepared 2 such plans. One was for what they're terming Harbor Walk Plaza, which will be TLC's overall operation of the lease site as the master leaseholder, and 1 for Harbor Walk Inn with the hotel being operated as a separate business, although still owned by TLC. Both plans were prepared by Rabbit Hole Solutions over in Atascadero, Kenneth Kayes is the proprietor there. Both contain industry-standard elements. Again, we analyzed, and when I say "we," it was Finance Director, City Attorney, myself, City Manager, were the main lookers at those, and with the Tourism Manager as well, Jennifer Little had some input on it as well, more so on the marketing plan. Back to the business plan, again, they had sufficient detail at this stage, again, I spoke of, you know, they had P&Ls and cash flows and different charts and different forecasting. They had developmental and operational finance plans, included key assumptions, startup costs and expenses, cash flow, balance sheets, as applicable during the different periods, pre-construction being from now till 2021, and then revenue expense forecast post-construction 2022 to 2026, so basically going out 5 years. Net profit and loss, P&Ls I spoke to earlier, again, cash flow statements, balance sheets as applicable post-construction. Sublease pricing and revenue projections were reasonable and assumed 2% increase or escalation over time. Their expense projections, again, were reasonably accurate and assumed 2% annual increase and seemed to cover all the things they need to cover. On the hotel end, the hotel revenues appeared low from an average daily rate standpoint, but high on percent occupancy and aggressive and growth assumptions. I'll get in that a little bit later, but a more reasonable approach would be probably to mirror more what the city's existing hotel numbers are, but TLC chose a little bit different approach that they might expand on later. They provided projected revenues to the Harbor Fund, General Fund, T-Bid, and Measure Q on what they believe they would negotiate for a lease. Of course, those things would be up for negotiation. And then they had financial summary of, or I'm sorry, a financial summary of the projected overall site gross revenues, Harbor Walk Plaza, P&L, liabilities and cash flow, and then Harbor Walk Inn operational P&L was included in the staff report's attachment too, so that was basically what I sort of termed the 15,000-foot look, without going into every individual line item and going into linen and insurance and all the different things. We tried to look at it more at 15,000-foot level and just spell out, here's your P&L, here's your basic profit and loss, liabilities, cash end of period to show that, you know, liability decreases, cash flow increases, and it's on the right side of the financial I'm probably assuming this is where most of the questions are going to be, is in the business plan numbers, and again, it'll be probably a combination of myself, Finance Director, City Manager, and TLC potentially answering these questions to get to the bottom of what we maybe want to get to the bottom of tonight. And item number 3 was a professionally-prepared marketing plan with industry-standard elements. That plan was prepared by mental marketing, that was included in the staff report's attachment number 3. It contains industry-standard elements of note, goals and objectives, detail on achieving them was lacking, so we believe the plan should be further refined and developed as the project progresses. Continued professional marketing assistance is advised from now moving forward and up to, you know, groundbreaking and opening for business. Lead certification, which is, as most people know, is a green, environmentally sustainable-type certification. If achieved, it could set this project apart from other projects and potentially build on a new customer base that's not really well-served here in town. And, again, their initial ADR, average daily rate, occupancy and growth assumptions appear overly aggressive and should assume normal. More Bay patterns, which should be about 60% occupancy and 6% growth over time, would be more reasonable. While they may achieve higher occupancy over time, you can't assume that coming right out of the gate and then growth as well, it'd be a little more reasonable to follow the More Bay standard, what's happening right now. And this plan shouldn't assume that vacation rentals can be leveraged for increased T-Bid revenues. Currently, vacation rentals are not in T-Bid, and there's no guarantee that they will be, so while that may be something to shoot for, it's not a reality at this time, so shouldn't be assumed that that would happen. Item number 4, the Centennial Parkway Project Coordination with Adjacent Leaseholders and Financial Commitment. TLC did provide evidence of coordination with Centennial Leaseholders, Doug Reddigan of Rosa's Landing, and then across the street in there with Bert Caldwell, libertine pub. Little more interaction and commitment from Doug Reddigan. Bert Caldwell unfortunately had some family emergencies back east that made him largely unavailable to get into any kind of significant discussions with TLC before the deadlines for submission. But both Reddigan and Caldwell have indicated willingness to discuss issues of mutual interest and participation in the Centennial Market Plaza plans as they move forward, and TLC does have $20,000 built into their financial planning for Centennial for participation in that plan. All right, how we doing so far? Covered a lot in a short period of time. So, to conclude, again, we've analyzed the plans and financial submissions, we've conducted revenue expense calculations, we've interviewed Mr. Lee, Mr. Hansen, Mr. Kayes, again, it's been myself, the Finance Director, City Manager, City Attorney, Tourism Manager, we've all had pieces and parts in this. This project's on similar scale and concept to other successful owner-operator waterfront redevelopments. Operation after redevelopment appears financially viable as proposed, in other words, short of anything drastically happening in the economy or otherwise in the near future, it looks like it would be operationally viable as proposed. Preliminary financial support is in evidence. Critical questions are, of course, can TLC successfully muster the $1.2 million over the next 2, 2 and 1/2 years, and will the financiers lend when the time comes? There's a matter of timing in there in that lenders aren't going to lend until there's some surety in the process. Right now, TLC has no lease, so they've really got no collateral, they've got no leased property to use for collateral. That would come, if things continue on according to the Consent of Landowner timeline, sometime in, I believe, in August, would be when they could potentially get through concept-level approval through Planning Commission and City Council, and at that time, we'd be able to negotiate a new lease. Of course, we'd probably be talking negotiation leading up to that so that we hit the ground running come approval time. Once the lease is negotiated, then the financier's going to have something to sink their teeth into to be able to lend on, so the matter of timing is, you know, whether or not the city's comfortable going down a 9- to 12-month path of some uncertainty while TLC gathers their financial muster and gets up to bat when it comes time to get up to bat with the financiers. So, that's where the biggest risks lie in this project. The business plans, again, they've got the industry-standard elements, there's really nothing lacking. They passed general scrutiny, again, we looked at them, not at treetop level, but 15,000 feet, and they appear to be sound business plans. Marketing plan, again, although it's passed general scrutiny, it needs further development, it needs more development on achieving the goals and not just stating the goals. The redevelopment team members and business partners, they're generally known, they're viable entities, they appear to have the capacity to plan, permit, and build out this project. Staff, we've concluded that TLC's met the deadlines and submission requirements as outlined in the Consent of Landowner, and we're recommending the Council deem TLC in compliance with the COL. And I guess that's the end.
All right, Eric?
For now.
Thanks. And with that, we'll start off with questions on this, and I'll look to Red. Do you want to start us off on questions?
Well, I guess the big question is about the $1.2 million, and I'm not sure how to ascertain whether that's achievable, so. I'd like to have a plausible answer for that, but I don't know exactly how to arrive at it, so.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Matt?
The, one question I sent to Eric earlier today was talking, I guess it seems to me the one point that we're going to be looking at is this funding concept, and one question I had for you, Eric, this was a long process, not just for TLC, but for you. Is this a standard process for the city to go through with anybody going through a lease?
So, we've not, in my, in my experience running an apartment, this is the first such process we've gone to. I can recall over the last 10 to 15 years, one other similar RFP process on a lease site, and that was what's now the House of Juju, and where we had, you know, we put out to RFP and there were submissions, and eventually the city decided on who they're going to choose. I don't believe that a Consent of Landowner document was the operative document at the time, I'm not sure exactly what they used, but there was financial analysis of the proponents of those projects, believed they're all existing waterfront leaseholders. Other redevelopment projects have been by existing leaseholders on their existing lease sites. I'll use Smith-Held and Inez Vila at the Mirror Image one down by the aquarium, and down by the old salt building, where they were existing leaseholders, known entities, where they came in and got their project through. We approved them to move forward, I don't believe we did a Consent of Landowner-type agreement with them, but we approved them to move forward on their project, got City Council to agree to let them move forward, they submitted it through Scott's Department and eventually got concept approval, and then negotiated a new lease, and got the financing and moved forward. I don't know the degree of scrutiny that we put those folks to for their redevelopment, but it's, probably was less than what we're doing now for this RFP process. And then, and so, like you say, like you asked earlier, we look at credit reports, we look at bank statements, we look at pretty deep and fairly invasive into their financial life to try and ascertain whether they can pull it off or not. When a leaseholder comes in and buys an existing lease site, we do probably a really a 30,000 or 35,000-foot level just to see what their history is and make sure there's no big black marks, and let the sale go through and go on with it. So, those are kind of the different degrees of financial scrutiny that we've applied to folks over the years.
Okay, because with that in mind, in terms of this process going on in the last 4 or 5 months, this group, we've asked for a number of different materials and documents and securities to show that they, A, have funding, and that they can, through the COL process, show it. So, barring them showing up with a suitcase full of money, and I guess that's why I asked the first question, is this standard operating procedure when we ask these people, any leaseholder, not necessarily just this group, is you have to show that you have this, and barring the, you know, the suitcase full of cash, these letters or these, from lenders, usually those would be sufficient, yes?
Well, you, yes, it's, yeah, short of, which you could maybe term it bonding, shorter than putting up a $3 million bond, which is, you know, is in our leases, there's language in all our leases that says, you know, bonding may be required for certain projects that people try to participate on or embark upon. Yeah, short of them showing up with a suitcase full of cash, asset liquidity and commitments from lenders is about the most you're going to get without somebody having a long track record and a lender that's worked with them and they've got development history, and they can come to the table with a letter from the bank saying, "We'll loan them $3 million tomorrow."
And also, some of the questions that the Council had for TLC going back a few months was the insufficiency of various business plans, and having talked to with Jennifer and staff, and do you feel much more confident with those than had been previously submitted?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's all my questions.
John?
Thank you. Eric, thank you for your presentation and details of that, and thanks for chatting with me earlier today regarding the information that you presented. I did have a number of questions, and thanks for answering those. Thanks to Ms. Hansen and Mr. Lee for meeting with myself last Friday, I think it was, to answer questions that we had at that time, and, let's see if there are any other thanks. Oh, and thanks for submitting a markedly improved business plan and a marketing plan compared to last time, and I must say, they appear to be much more of what we would expect to see from a standard basis for the magnitude of this kind of a project, so I appreciate that very much. So, I have a few questions surrounding 3 issues. 1, the capitalization, initial capitalization issue. 2, creditworthiness and maybe experience, and I'm not sure who to ask the questions to or who on your team may be able to respond, so I'll let either staff or you guys figure out, Mr. Lee and Ms. Hansen, who you might want to respond. So, my first question is regarding the requirement for $1.2 million, again, borrowing from what my peer stated, not possessing a suitcase full of cash totaling $1.2 million. Could you specifically outline for me and give me a good understanding of the details of the cash that will be readily available to you to fund everything required until such time as you might secure a bank loan for the required remainder $2.7 million for the project? And I know that we talked a little bit about that, but I think it's important to vet that for the whole Council, and again, for me to have a deeper understanding of that. So, if I could have whomever you might want to respond, I don't know, Jennifer, or Eric, or possibly one of the consultants may want to respond. In other words, do we have written notes, secured notes? Do we have written documents of either loans procured, monies promised, income from bank statements? I'm just trying to get to the detail of the $1.2 million.
I can start, and I'll let TLC and Ken or whoever, if they want to jump in and come to the dais and fill in any more details. As far as a suitcase of cash, and I'll, the bank statements as well, I'll call their suitcase of cash, again, they've got about a quarter of a million dollars in a suitcase. That's in bank statements, we saw their combined bank statements of money that they've saved and some inheritance money that they've received, that is in bank statements in their name, so that is their suitcase. They've got a half a million dollar liquid asset, which is basically a loan that they're proposing to potentially sell if they need the funding, which, depending on how much they can save between now and then, it's a liquid asset. They've, I've seen the loan paperwork and I've seen where that would go, and it appears to be a truly viable $500,000 asset. I'll let TLC expand on that if they want to. And then the remainder, about $375,000 in future savings ability. TLC and then really Sharice and her combined retail outlets, 2 in More Bay, 1 Hawaii, 1 Avala, they've demonstrated an approximate $10,000 per month savings ability, that those businesses are all up and running and standing on their own and generating profits, and they've been putting those profits over the last year or 2 in the inventory and building up those businesses and getting them running and then opening the second one in More Bay. That's all over with, they're up and standing on their own, they're fully inventoried and reinventoring themselves on their own, and so now they're putting the extra money that was coming out of that into the bank, so over time, of approximately 3 years of time, about $10,000 a month adds up to about $375 over the approximate 3 years to get between now and then. So, that's the, sort of the 15,000-foot level, I'll let, if these guys want to go get any closer than that.
As far as the financial consultant that I would have come up here, this is something that would be best answered by myself. The investments that we have our money in right now are making us 10% to 25% on our money, and they are in what we have as a promissory note for $500,000 at the time that we need to liquidate that $500,000. At the time that we need to liquidate that $500,000, that promissory note will just transfer, so therefore we would not be responsible for it anymore, we would just have the funds. We are earning 10% on that right now, so instead of putting it in our suitcase and bringing it up here right now, we're still making money that's helping us be able to do it in 2020, And we also have my businesses, which have inventory in them, which is, over the next two years plus, being sold, and so therefore that's a 25% return, that as I have inventory, which I have an extensive amount of inventory, I've been building it for 18 years. In the last five, in the last three years, I've opened up two other stores, and in those two other stores, I had startup costs of over $120,000, and then I built the inventory of each one of those by $300,000. If I don't open another store, I'm going to have those funds available, and I've historically been able to accomplish that. I have been able to save over $200,000 in the account since I've been requested to start saving, or wanting to start saving for this project. As far as the mention of what we have in our account, there is an additional inheritance of $150,000 that was in the notes that would not require us to be paid back. So, with our $500,000 promissory note, the $150,000 of inheritance, the fact that I've saved over $200,000, and paid for all of the fees and project costs up to date, and shown that in my account, that goes towards that, and that leaves, not able to do the numbers in my head, but an achievable goal based on the fact that I can make $10,000 a month go and saved for this project. Anything else?
I didn't calculate it.
Oh, you did, he calculated?
No, no, I didn't calculate it. Just, oh. From my end, excuse me, Travis Leig, hello. From my end, the $500,000 liquid asset from GAFCO is going to be transferred, sold, however you want to put it, but basically, we do have the paperwork documenting that there will be a transfer there. Eric mentioned that, and that is in the staff report, so there's that. I believe she mentioned the $150,000 early inheritance from her father, and when you add up all the numbers, that's the 1.214. So, yeah.
John?
Yeah. Whoa, sorry about that. Thank you. And pardon me if I just validate some of that. Jennifer, could you comment on, specifically, we have bank statements that show $250,000 worth of cash that we've vetted and validated. Two, we have seen a $500,000 note that is from, I believe, GAFCO, that is either secured or unsecured, maybe you could comment on that. And the third part was, I think, Sharice, you mentioned that you had accumulated inventory, and the plan was to sell off inventory in order to raise cash of about $150,000. Did I understand that correctly?
No, that I've been...
Sorry, I need to come, that's what I wrote verbatim, but I didn't quite understand that, and then I'll ask if Jennifer validated that.
Okay, there are quite a few other issues with that. One, I have a surplus of inventory at this time. Every year, I try and have a good amount in inventory for tax purposes. And right now, I have the four stores, all very well inventoried. The fourth store that's located at 833, that would be a liquidation before the actual construction phase, so I will be able to liquidize that asset. But primarily, what I'm trying to say is that I have been building my inventory, and so there won't be a huge amount that will be needed in order to restock over the next two years, and I will not be starting another business and having to increase my inventory during that period.
So, I think what I hear you saying is that you expect that the expenses for the operation based upon the cost of goods sold will be less, and that will allow you to have a greater bottom line, that you'll be able to accumulate cash, net cash, from the business as a result of that?
Yes, and that I will also be able to have a stable amount of products within the operating stores that would not put any burden on those doors.
Wouldn't compromise the operations.
Exactly, would not compromise.
You've, I'm just, sorry if I'm repeating it back, trying to understand. You've built up inventory that's going to be adequate to carry you through the time period until such time as you will need to have the bank loan, and as a result of building that inventory, you will not incur the expenses of having to restock the inventory, which improves your bottom line because of there being less expenses and a greater net profit, is...
Correct, yes.
Okay. And that's about 10, that's where the $10,000 a month savings about?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Seasonally.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Didn't mean to be tedious with that, but, and so Jennifer, I guess maybe I was going to get your comments on that 1.2 million capitalization, if you've vetted that, and if you have any comments on that, I'd appreciate it.
We did vet that, so we received bank statements for both Ms. Hanson and the TLC business. My notes say they totaled about $200,000, so I'll go back and look in a minute to see if it was 250 or not, I might have rounded that. There was also a letter regarding the $500,000 from GAFCO with bank statements supporting that. There was a notice of intent with the $150,000 inheritance, so that was validated, and then Ms. Hanson and Mr. Leig were able to provide sufficient evidence to show capacity to make that $10,000 savings each month going forward. They could prove that they were saving that now, so the expectation would be that they would forward going forward, and I think if you add those all up, you're right about at 1.2, regardless of the $50,000, so.
Good. Thanks for taking me through that, I appreciate it. The second question I had, one of the, I think, important criteria for any relationship that the city undertakes with any partner, be it a LSE, a business partner, somebody that acquires a property from the city or what have you, and possibly, Scott, you could comment on this, would be creditworthiness. And I'm noting in the staff report, a reported credit score for Ms. Hanson that is quite good with an actual number, but then for Mr. Leig, I don't have a score, and I have one reference to a default. And so, in order for me, in good faith, to vet the viability of any kind of financial partner and the creditworthiness, future borrowing ability, help me understand further, staff, how we have vetted that and determined that that is good enough to be appropriate for creditworthiness, not only now, but in the future in terms of potential ability to acquire a loan.
I'll go ahead and I'll jump in, and again, it'll be a joint effort. So, on Mr. Leig's credit report, they knew it was low because it had a default, and again, that default was basically a lot that they, Travis was going to build on and turn around and sell the single-family residence on, and during the downturn, 2008, 2009, I believe he bought it, I can't remember where it was, I want to say Kuykes, but I'd be right. It turned upside down, he just walked away from it rather than trying to fight for it, and ended up being a default. There's several other issues that they had on, that he had on his report for some past due accounts, that many of them, he had, over the weeks leading up to even last week, had been bringing in correction letters that they had been contesting those items, and some of them were some high hospital billings that they were contending with and trying to get put to rest, and many of them were, so they've been picking away at them. But again, Ms. Hanson's credit report was the strongest, obviously it had an excellent rating, it was starting to tease up into the 800 range, I believe. Mr. Leig, obviously, was the weaker link in that regard, and yeah, it's, his credit report is a little more riskier than Ms. Hanson's credit report, but they've been showing evidence of making course corrections on it and trying to build it back up to better levels.
And Jen, did you vet that, and do you have comments on that? And please, Mr. and Mrs. Leig, I am really not trying to air your, any dirty laundry or anything like that in public, I'm just trying to get to the bottom line of creditworthiness and so...
Without getting into the sticky details of my credit report, all of this has been run by the bank, all the bankers that we have discussed borrowing money from, they're on board still, they're signing letters of interest, and got two years to clean up my report, and as it stands, I'm right at, you know, the level that they want to see at the minimum level, and right now, I'm building it up from there. So, they are fine, and I've got, like I said, two years to clean up some things. As Eric mentioned, certain things were erroneous on my report that I had disputed that have been cleared since, other things were payments that I have made since we started this process, and again, plenty of time to clean it up, so.
Thanks. Any comments?
You know, I think Eric covered it, but I would just say that Ms. Hanson's credit score was in a, in a range that's, you know, that's an ascertainable metric that we can use, and there was a number provided, and it fell in that range for Mr. Leig's. Given that the banks provided those expression of interest with the credit reports that he has today, presumably, they're going to get better, he's taken action thus far. I don't think we specifically made a statement as to it's okay or not, we're disclosing what we saw, and that's really going to be a policy question for the council if you're comfortable with that.
And, gosh, I hesitate to ask, but is there a number?
My credit score?
No, not currently.
Oh, okay. If you do make a statement, you need to come up and, sorry, sorry, it's for the public, so, maybe for the viewing audience, so my question was, is there a number on Mr. Leig's credit?
Okay, one of the parts of getting a number for your credit report actually affects the way your credit report comes out. So, we're being proactive with dealing with disputed items, and we asked if anybody needed to have that done, and they said no. Well, based on the fact that everybody knows that when you start asking for what your number is, it has an impact on your credit, and we're doing our due diligence. Today, it might be great, but it's every day that it gets better, and with those disputes that he just put in, what, three, about four weeks ago, it could be better today, and most likely is.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me. Okay. So, then the third issue was, for me, was, and question series that I have would be experience, oh, I knew where I was going, I'm sorry. I may can ask Eric this, I'm sorry, on the last issue, TLC, is that an LLC, S Corporation, C Corp? What kind of partnership is it?
I'll let TLC answer that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, either of you, Mr. Leig or Ms. Hanson. TLC, is it an LLC?
Our plan to date was for TLC Enterprises to be incorporated at the top as a holding company, and then other entities below will be Sub-S Corps. Sub-S.
Yeah, okay, so help me understand the shell. It's not incorporated yet?
It is.
Oh, it is, and what is it? Incorporated as a...
I believe it's LLC, not positive. It is a C Corp.
It's a C Corp.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
My apologies.
No problem. And you said the subentities, you made a comment about the subentities?
We had recently spoken with Legal about how we should structure it, and their suggestion was to do Sub-S Corps as well as with my CPA. So, holding company at the top, and then under the C gallery, potentially operating as a Sub-S, and then Harbor Walk-in, operating as a Sub-S.
Okay, Sub-S. So, my third line of questioning has to do with experience, and for Mr. Leig, or whomever wants to answer it, just wondering what kind of experience you have. I know from last time, we talked about, you've been in construction, you're a licensed contractor, and I'm wondering if you've built any commercial projects of this magnitude, or what historically your projects have been, just for my edification.
Quite simply, nothing of this magnitude. I've built multiple residential homes in the area, dual residences at a time, upwards of 1.2 million is the largest project I've worked on. Again, similar, you know, construction, though, not too concerned about it as far as the magnitude issue that you're bringing up.
Good. Thank you for that, appreciate it. And the last question, and I don't know if, Mr. Graves is a consultant that maybe we go to, or is on your team, but I guess my last question is, we talked last time about running the operation, specifically the hotel entity, and I think the last time we spoke, you mentioned that you would be going to school, or you would be getting some education with regard to that. Could you just tell me what the current plan is for running the business or the operation and getting up to speed with regards to being a hotelier? That's my last question.
Good evening, Mayor Irons, council member, and welcome, Scott Collins. You asked some very good questions, Councilman Heading, as far as their experience in the industry. Frankly, I deal with a lot of clients and a lot of potential investors on hospitality projects. Frequently, they are excited about getting into the hotel industry, it sounds sexy, it sounds fun, but the thing I hear quite frequently is it sounds like it's passive income. One thing I do know as a hotelier is it's very much active income. It's turning beds, it's getting guests in, it's getting them out, 365 days a year. In this particular case, I think there's a certain character that they have shown in the successful operation of their four retail establishments. They understand that aspect. Running a hotel is maybe 50% real estate, and it really is a 50% retail business. So, the skills that Ms. Hanson has honed over the last 18 years will very easily extrapolate into the hotel industry. Additionally, in their financials for the hotel portion and the P&Ls, which I did consult on, we've also built in there a $30,000 a year consultation fee that can be distributed amongst multiple parties or anybody they see fit at that time. That is naturally a moving target, and it'll depend upon the circumstances when the doors do open in 2022. And I'm sorry, I realize for the record, I did not state my name. I'm Aaron Graves, I am the chairman for the Morro Bay T-Bid, I am also a hotel broker and a hotel investor.
And your relationship with TLC?
I'm a paid consultant for them.
Thank you.
And I also want to state, actually, in that fact, they reached out to me a couple of months ago, as a consultant, and to look at the project. I met them on site, we looked at everything for about a three-hour meeting. At that point, I wasn't sure what to expect. Frankly, I was impressed at the knowledge they had brought to the table. When I met them two months ago, they had done their homework, they had done their due diligence, they were up to speed on marketing terms, professional standards and metrics, to a certain degree, actually, more so than current operators I do know. So, I was impressed with that aspect. Additionally, in that initial meeting, I was very clear with them, I said, "We'll look at everything from a 10,000-foot overview, and at that point, if I believe in the project, if this is a project I would put money in, then I'm happy to stand with you and be your consultant." Conversely, if it's a project I don't believe in, I said I would have to recuse myself, I did not want to stand up here in front of you and vouch for something that I don't believe in. After going into the project, the hotel portion, in great detail, it's a viable project, I think it's well thought out, and I think it would be a very good complement to Morro Bay. I can get into that in greater detail for you, I don't want to digress too far, though.
No, I appreciate your comments, and thanks for making them.
Of course.
Thanks. No further comments, thank you. Or questions, I should say.
Thanks, Marla.
Okay, thank you. I should start out by saying that I have met with Sharice and Travis some time ago, and spoke, have spoken with Sharice since then, and I have also met with Eric, and he's answered a lot of my questions, and many of the questions that I had are... ones that have already been asked, so I will definitely not repeat them. But I will just move forward with the ones that I still have. Can you, and I guess this is for Eric, the lending sources that have been listed as showing preliminary interest, are they all known and reputable? And we know who they are? Maybe Jen knows the answer to that.
Yes, they are. I'll go look. I want to say Community West Bank, American Riviera Bank, which are standard financial lenders. I think American Riviera is down in Santa Barbara, Community West is multiple locations. And then the hard money lender is Midcoast Capital, which is an entity I've seen on a couple of different loans here on the waterfront over the decades. So.
Okay. You're familiar with them?
Yeah, I'm familiar with Midcoast. It's a, like I say, a hard money lender, but the other banks are standard financial institutions.
Okay. And I know that in the current consent of landowner agreement, there's a very specific target dates that have to be met, or I'm assuming it goes away. I mean, it ends. We basically cancel it. Are those still achievable? I know there's been some time lapse.
Yeah, I mean, we, I looked at those, you know, when we came back to redo the consent of landowner, worked with Scott Graham and looking at the planning element because obviously that's one of the most significant time eaters in the process and made sure that he was comfortable with the timelines and worked with TLC to make sure they were comfortable with the timelines. But there are timelines in there and every single one of them says thou shalt do this by such and such timeline, or this consent of landowner may be revoked. So their feet are held to the fires. And, you know, that was council's direction to make sure that they had realistic, because I've seen enough projects along the waterfront where, you know, and putting timelines in leases that are overly optimistic and just the process in the best of times just takes a long time. I mean, I won't go into examples, but it can take a long time. So we want to make sure they're achievable but not so far out that it was just wasting excessive amounts of time.
Well, I know the first one coming up is applying for a conditional use permit by January 2 of 2018. Is that still achievable?
I believe it is. I mean, the original timelines, you know, we've taken a little bit of a time delay, although this was set up from November 1, these first four on were set up on what we believe was an achievable timeline. TLC asked for, was granted about a 15-day extension on putting together their business plans and getting it submitted. But they're still assuming we're moving forward. And we were hoping to be doing this in November, maybe the second meeting, later in November, later in the month of November, but just, actually early in November, but it just didn't work out from timing wise and with the personnel changes. So we slipped over here into December. So yeah, we're kicked back maybe a month or so here, but I believe we're still potentially on a good timeline that should be still workable.
Okay. And you have basically stated, Eric, that TLC's submissions and requirements have been responsive. Do you consider them adequate?
To the level that I believe we, that I believe that we as staff believe we should be looking. Again, I didn't, I didn't feel it was our charge to go down and look at every line item and question every assumption and get down to the, to the business plan analysis to the nth degree level, just making sure the elements were there and relying on them and their business partners to be professional and have done their job right and just making sure their overall numbers and assumptions look good. I believe they've met the requirements in the COL. They've prepared the business plans. They've got the industry standard elements where the analysis in industry standard quote unquote would be, would be in, again, what I call the sort of 15,000-foot level look that, yeah, they seem to have all the assumptions and their numbers look right and they've taken everything into account and they're prepared by professionals that can defend them. In that regard, I believe they are adequate in terms of what we're looking for.
And do you have any concerns or reservations about anything that they've submitted so far?
Again, it's, as I've stated, they're not, they don't, TLC doesn't bring a large amount of financial horsepower like some larger scale developers could bring. That said, they do appear to have potential financial backing, provided they can perform. Those are the big ifs. And it's, that's the risk that we need to look at from a policy or functional standpoint, whether we want to undertake that risk and wait nine to 12 months for them to get to the point where we can look for more financial surety. The evidence, again, that we've seen and they've provided ample documentation with bank statements and whatnot, that they appear to be able to get there. But, you know, things could change in a number of different ways, but that's the risk we need to evaluate.
I noted that in the list of milestones, and I believe you said that the lease would be probably negotiated sometime in August. And the date by which they had to have financing is 120 days after that. Would it be possible to cut that down to a shorter period of time? Is there a reason why it would take 120 days? I mean, it just strikes me that we would like to see the surety of the financial commitment from the bank, the loan, as quickly as possible. So I'm just wondering if we could make that adjustment.
I would, well, from a functional standpoint, I would think that that could be shortened up in that as they're moving through the concept plan approval process and the project gets more defined and Scott's team has looked at it with Coastal and everything is going according to plan, I would assume the lenders can be re-engaged at that point and start bringing them forward and getting them talking and working out potential terms to speed up that process. So yes, I would think that could happen from a functional standpoint. Can we change the consent of landowner? I guess it may be part of your second question. Can we change that 120 days to something different? I might defer to my legal friend across the aisle here and see, you know, we've got a contract of sorts here that we've committed to. Joe?
I would say that that would be something that you'd have to ask if there's a mutual agreement to make that change.
Okay. Yeah. And part of it is just practically speaking, if they have in their hand a lease, could they get a loan in less than 120 days? I mean, I don't know enough about how long it takes. I'm just wondering practically. And then, of course, if it's not, I let it go.
I think what you're going to get at that point, again, if this all occurs, they get concept plan approval by the end, and the COL says by August 31. So really by September of next year, they've got concept approval. We will have been working with them on potential lease terms up to them. Like I said, I want to hit that ground running and not start, okay, it's, they just got approval last night. Now let's start talking lease. I wanted, I will have wanted to have been talking lease with them leading up to that so that we've, we've got a largely, and with the council as well, to start talking parameters so that we can hit that ground running. With a lease in hand, there's still a year from now, they're going to need two and a half or so years, two and a half to three years to generate that full 1.2 million dollars to bring to the table. I don't know that they're going to get a loan in their hands next year, this time. Well, next year, September-ish. Certainly, it would be reasonable that they could get more solid financial commitment, more than just an LOI, and get a potential preapproval or other instrument that shows the lenders more willingness to sink their teeth into it.
Do you think that there are any additional requirements that we should expect from them moving forward?
Financial or what type of other?
I'm just wondering.
I mean, we've put some, we've got pretty thorough in this COL and went down the permitting and financial process fairly thoroughly to make sure we didn't leave anything out. So I think we've, and put timelines on all that. Again, like I said, we tried to craft it to make it realistic, yet not have a bunch of time wasted in there. So unless you have something in mind, no, I think we've got things pretty well covered in that.
All right. Thank you, Eric. The last question is actually for Sharice, and this is in response, or actually, I'm asking it. I know the answer, but I have had several citizens ask me this question. So just for the record, I'd like you to tell us about the food court restaurants that you intend to, and I know that you've already talked to some folks. So people have asked me about that. So if you could just fill us in.
Oh, you just want me to give you a general overlay of what the design is?
Well, of what you're planning.
Okay. In my experience on the Embarcadero, I've witnessed at this exact site, a lot of larger scale restaurants go in. They have issues as far as staffing because it's a seasonal job. So you have to hire a lot of people in summer and let them go in winter. And that doesn't have a very good customer service. Also, the higher rates of rent and also increased percentages with being a leased held building has put an increased burden on a lot of these larger establishments that have a lower profit margin due to the cost of running operations. So our design is to have four smaller venue food vendors. And each one of those will be more of a come up and serve either a custom build, but more of a fast, there's that word, fast casual. And that would relieve the owners of having to have that influx of employees with the extensive costs that are associated with payroll. We actually have a really difficult time right now even finding those kind of employees because of the cost of living and the low amount of housing available. So that would also decrease the burden of actually finding good employees during that time. And then also the smaller spaces would allow them to cover their monthly bills because the overall would be a lower monthly fee. So in January and February, with times are really tough, it wouldn't break them in winter. And then it also gives the opportunity for four different operators to become their own business profession, you know, owner, operators, which would allow them to have the income to live in Moro Bay. Of those four entities, one would be a bar that would service the entire area, dining area. And then the other three would be of different food types, which would add to the variety that we want to see on the Embarcadero. One of them, because it is something that I've learned, that you have to have fish and chips. This is Moro Bay. This is the waterfront. This is what people have to have at least one time in their visit. And if you don't have it on the menu and you have three people wanting to eat and one of them wants that, they're going to go somewhere else and they're going to go to whatever regular place is on the Embarcadero. What we want to do is be able to have that to serve for anybody who wants that, but also to give other options, whether it be sushi, or pizza, or poke, or there's a multitude of different varieties that can actually go into this design that would benefit all of the Embarcadero and the employees that work on the Embarcadero. They would want to frequent it too. And it would cater to families as well as people who want to sit and dine.
And have you already spoken to some possible restaurateurs who might be interested?
Yes, absolutely. And those were included in the RFP. As we are approaching more involvement in this, more have come up and have asked and requested, including my landlord of my Avela shop. He's like, sign me up. I want it. And he's a very well-established businessperson that runs coffee and delicacies. Also, we have the other smaller operating out in the courtyard area, which would be confection vendor. So that would also be a smaller area and it would allow them to be an owner-operator with something that's for after dinner and that the people who are in our public area to have as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I respond to something that was stated earlier, the heading question in regards to Travis and, and his interest in being, of what his ability to do the construction? Travis has a real difficulty in public speaking. He, I want, we would like to strike his final statement in regards to not being of concern. Honestly, he is so dedicated to this. He has worked every single day. He's always on the phone, getting better estimates, getting more knowledge. And he is constantly talking to professionals and getting more information. He has worked it into his construction finances, have Jim Hasty as an overseeing contractor. And he has the, and he's already planning on hiring a foreman. And as far as your question, as far as learning more, he is so interested in the LEED certification part that he is going to attend the LEED AP certification for contractors. So yes, we've been dealing a lot of business plans and we did our business plan class. So we did a lot of learning with that. And we never want to stop learning. And we are actually very dedicated, especially Travis. Thanks.
Thanks, Sharice. You're done with questions?
I'll just do my ex parte. Got to meet with Sharice and Travis as well with Dr. Heading. We were invited from Travis and Sharice to discuss the plan as well. So just a little ex parte there. We were able to discuss and they presented their business plan in that setting. And I just want to just acknowledge that and thank, thank those guys for meeting with us. There's been enough questions at this point for me. I didn't want to get any more questions. We do have a speaker slip. And then there was somewhat of a presentation on this as well. We are, you know, pushing nine o'clock on this. We have one speaker slip. I would just ask your presentation. Who is that? You're doing your presentation for you, Sharice?
We are all doing.
Okay. So if you want to do that right now, then we'll get to our questions from, we'll open it up for public comment.
Does he know to do that? Does he need to be prompted to put this on the screen?
Is AGP coordinating with you on that?
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
Mayor, how much time?
We've, if
It's 10 minutes for this presentation. And if we go over, we put in a public speaking slip for three minutes of our marketing.
You know, as the extensive conversations we've had, if we could just have you do your presentation, we've got quite a bit of information in the spirit of time and everything. If you could just do this, the presentation.
The 10?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. While he's getting that set up, I did want to answer one of Marla's responses is we did not set up the 120 days after lease. That was, oh, oh, what about this one? You said you were going to do the picture of this on the screen. Okay. The 120 days was not something that was established by us. It was the standards that were based on staff's recommendation. I would believe that certain elements of that are going to be bank-related and it's going to be time that they need for that. And that's going to be out of our hands. So I would say that if that's the standard for requesting it to be reviewed, that it remain that because I wouldn't want to have something in the bank's hands and them not to meet that criteria and have it negatively affect us. So, okay, he's working on that. Okay, so I'll start my presentation. He's trying. Okay. Good evening, council, members, staff and public. Sharice Hanson of Under the Sea Gallery, TLC Family Enterprises. We are here tonight to show proof of our ability to build and operate a much-needed development at 833 Embarcadero. We are the best choice to see this project through construction and operation. Our family's history of businesses here should be proof of our ability to succeed. Moro Bay tourism's agenda is reaching out to more and diverse visitors. Our project concepts will attract the clientele Moro Bay is hoping to capture. Travis and I will create a destination that cherishes the rich history and unique character. All the well- all while promoting new public services like a LEED-certified building, beautiful bayfront lodgings, various affordable food options, retail with interactive displays, as well as water and land activities. This property and its requirements are designed for people like Travis and me, who will act as welcoming faces and ambassadors to our beautiful Morro Bay. And on that note, I will give the floor to our professional finance plan consultant, Ken Kays, to briefly explain how we intend to move forward.
Thank you, Sharice, Mayor, Council. They, the TLC Enterprises asked me to put together the business plan. Just one point of clarification, I can't take credit for both business plans. Getting one of them out in that short period of time was enough. Travis actually put together the one for the hotel. I'm going to go over just the plaza aspect, and I will do this very quickly in respect for time. So one of the starting looking at is, what I look at as a consultant putting a plan together is how good is the data that I'm starting with? So TLC had various sources that were formal quotes. They have family businesses in the area, access to other businesses, to their data, and interviews of local business owners. City staff did their due diligence in looking at with the local market data, industry standards and benchmarks, and they also did interviews with waterfront leaseholders. And the data between both of those, from my perspective, correlates very well. Excuse me. As for the financial projections, from, I know there's a lot, there was a lot of questions about the funding. The amount of funding that's there, that properly funds the project to do what everybody wants to see it do, which is a win-win for everybody. And I won't go into the details of the funding because we've been down that path. The revenue forecast is moderate. What I mean by that is, most of the time, if people do business plans, they're overly aggressive on projecting their revenue, and it usually gets them into trouble, so I actually work with them on backing some of them off, so to make sure they can attain those revenue projections. One of the other things I looked at is cash flow. That's where most businesses seem to get into trouble. And this pro forma was done over 10 years. The first five just take you through the construction, and then the second set of five is actual operations. During the full 10 years, they have a positive cash balance, an adequate cash balance. I wanted to make sure that they didn't run out of funding partway through this project. They show profitability in the first year of operations. And then again, this is just the master leasehold, not the individual businesses. And what they show for a net profit is in line with industry standards, between 15% and 18%, and they're actually slightly above that in some of the later years. They begin decreasing their liabilities in year one, starting to pay down the final loan on the structure. And they also begin, they're able to pay out distributions to, towards the capital investments at the end of year one. Viability, how sound is the plan for what they want to do? Financially, there's more than a 10% contingency on the total project amount, and that is, includes, there's money there for working capital. You may have rate increases, we've talked about this. You know, what's it going to be two years from now, and how do you cover unexpected expenses? Schedule-wise, your construction's scheduled for August of 2010, complete a year later with certificate of occupancy, and we show sublease operations in swing in January of 2022. So that allows time for tenant improvements and absorb any possible delays that show up. So I'd like to see where there's a little cushion in the schedule. One of the things that was talked about was harbor and city income, and you see some income in 2020 and 2021. It depends what gets negotiated during the construction phase, but they're still showing some harbor income. And then you can see all the other, the income, and the harbor income starts out a little lower. There is an assumption that the percentages may be lower to help the businesses be more solvent. They're going to come in and start up and move up to the full 5% towards the end. So that's what the revenue projections would look like for harbor income and the various city incomes. So in summary, it was well researched and documented. I see it as a conservative approach to making this project happen. It's financially sustainable. There's an appropriate amount of contingency and adequate schedule flexibility. And one of the things is the management team. The owners are talented and savvy. Most, I don't know if you know, they actually took a business planning course after one of your last meetings. They went out, and that's where one of the other business plans was written. They went in and learned what to do, and had guidance from the instructors on writing those, on that plan. And they have quite a professional advisory support team, just a list of people in the area all that are known. And so overall, my assessment is that it's a sound business model. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aaron Graves, chairman for Morro Bay T-Bid, paid consultant to this project. Mr. Cues and Rabbit Hole Business Solutions did by far the majority of the heavy lifting on this business plan. My job was simply to come in, overview the P&Ls, look at the financials exclusively for the hotel, and an operational model. Unfortunately, a lot of that data, as Mr. Enderby was respecting here, was very proprietary, and we did not feel it would be appropriate for it to be released at the council meeting right now, of course. There is a very light summation of that on page 109 of the PDF packet here that just kind of extrapolates out at the very bottom, harbor walk-in, profit and loss, and operational statement. Effectively looking at gross revenues on the first year of a little over $400,000. A bit ago, I heard mention of a low ADR on this property, but a high occupancy. And when you bring a new property to market, that is exactly the tactic you want to use to try to garner market share. You want a tremendous value proposition for your guests. They'd be willing to pay $275, $300 per night for that room. They get it for an average of $225. You start effectively creating ambassadors for your brand. You want the repeat guests to come back as much as possible. So the first challenge to do is to get, to fill up those heads in those beds, and at a lesser rate will drive occupancy and really increase the demand. We do show that pouring over in the following years, driving the rate up at a stabilized occupancy. Our revenues were actually projecting just simply increasing, frankly, at 11% from the first year at $402,000 to $450,000 on the second year. That's quite modest, given the potential and the comp set for a product of this quality. One of the things that is truly outstanding about their concept for this is the nature of how this particular hotel fits into the model for county tourism as a whole. So really quickly, I don't wish to bore you, but we have three types of guests that the county is trying to target, and there is a persona name for all of them. One is called our mom-to-the-max. The next one is the active adventurer, and the third persona is called our cultured class. Three different demographics, they are the primary guests we are sourcing to come to our area. This project is very unique because it actually taps into all three of those demographics. Our mom-to-the-max, our traveling parent, they are looking and working with the architect at the moment on creating different bed types in a family room and a unique bed configuration. We see a lot of hospitality products not offer that. From my personal experience as an owner, those are very great rooms and will sell well. So we're catering to our mom-to-the-max. Active adventurer, we are on the bay, phenomenal location, and as is noted in here in detail in the staff report, they will be going out, building strategic relationships with different tourism operators, kayak rentals, boat rentals, and so forth, putting packages together so that that second demographic, our active adventurer, can purchase that package, go out paddleboarding, go have dinner out in the ocean, whatever the case may be, and really catering to them. The third challenge, though, that they've done, and I think a very good job of overcoming, is our third demographic, our cultured class. That is a more affluent traveler that we are trying to garner and come to the area. That person will be highly interested in the LEED-certified project here. It'll be the only one on the entire central coast, and that will be a beacon for the city of Morro Bay to offer that product.
Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we, for mental marketing, can we redeem the three-minute speaker slip? Is that possible here?
So we have, I have, so we've concluded our presentation. I have one speaker slip from Mark Eltermann, and for public comment. And so we'll turn it over to public comment at this time.
Brilliant.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Eltermann with Mental Marketing. Thank you for allowing me some public comment here. I'll get through the most salient aspects of the marketing plan, recognizing that much of this has already been discussed, and Aaron, thank you for doing so. I wanted to just say that, as some of you know, the Mental Marketing, we're very devoted to the destination marketing success of Morro Bay, on all levels of promoting Morro Bay as a destination. We found this engagement with this particular operator quite unique, and a great opportunity to begin to align the destination marketing needs with an operator that is really devoted to working with the Tourism Bureau. That being said, we recognized in the marketing plan, hold on a second, there we go, that there is a process by which some of those tactical details need to be created at the right time. So there are a number of tactics that we figure that we would simply not do until the property is fully underway. Reason being, we're in a very dynamic arrangement right now in tourism marketing. Things are evolving very, very quickly. So tactics that we would propose now are unlikely to be those that we would propose for the city as well as this operator two years from now. So what I've shown here is how that plan would actually progress. The first and foremost is that this project actually addresses the unmet needs of the destination. We have established that we've got a terrific variety of lodging mix, but we do, we don't have a whole lot of upscale boutique type of experiences here. This project absolutely accomplishes that. Next step is actually is really refining, what are the tourism marketing practices of this destination? Those are constantly evolving, and we enjoy and appreciate the fact that we can be involved with it. The next being pre-launch outreach. This project, in order to be successful, has to have a very strong pre-launch outreach, has to go into proper vetting with your Tourism Bureau, and this operator has actually committed to us resources so that we can refine those tactics and interface with the Tourism bureaus in order to refine them. Then we get into final tactical plans, and it's just not time for that, and then we need to execute and refine as we go. So, in essence, this project does fulfill the unmet needs of this destination in this particular category. This operator, in their demonstration of this submittal and working with us, really establishes that they are committed to working closely with city staff on creating those final details, and we've created a part of it.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, with that, that's all my public speaker slips. I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to council. Thanks very much. As far as starting off for discussion, is everybody okay on, does anybody need a recess? Are you okay? Everybody's okay? All right, John, you want to start us off on discussion?
Thank you all for your input. TLC, you have come a long way in a short period of time, and I noted that earlier, and I appreciate that. I am very impressed by the plan, marketing plan, as well as the business plan that is developed. I think you have identified in this market two or three excellent consultants that have significant expertise that you didn't have before, that lend credence to this business line and what you're trying to do. And so I really commend you for that and for producing some documents that speak to the ongoing operation and your plan thereafter. The one concern that I have, and I've aired it before, is the ability to provide enough liquidity for initial capitalization to be able to obtain the loan and get to the point of the operation. That's the concern that I have. And there's inherent in that, the hat that I wear is obviously assessing risk for the city and determining viability of partners for facility, for the city, excuse me, long-term, and the ability to perform with regard to the demands that have been set out by somebody that we're going to enter into a partnership with. My concerns center around the disclosure of the credit issue that could have been disclosed earlier, and I may have missed it, but it's an important issue. It speaks to the council's ability to discern their viability, the viability of the relationships we enter into, and to me, would be an important criteria that we would want to maintain and make sure that we have viable partners that are credit-worthy. And right now, I don't, I don't have a level of comfort that that's true for both partners with regard to the organization. The second piece is the initial capitalization. I hear from one of our staff members, or maybe from the applicant, that there's $250,000 in cash, yet we have verification of $200,000 in cash. And that's not a big difference, I mean, it's $50,000. But the remainder of the funding initially to capitalize the project, there is significant risk for both the less-ee and for the less-or. If performance can't be obtained, I would hate to see you move along and get to a point where you're turned down by a bank because of capitalization issues. Not that I know that that's going to happen, but that's the assessment that I have to make with regard to the city. The lender, at least one of the lenders that was the initial lender that we looked at is a quote-unquote "hard money lender," which means a higher interest rate, which I know you've built into your plan. Hard money lenders work with individuals that usually have either credit or borrowing problems or issues with borrowing, and that's why the higher fee, that's for entities like that. And so that's a concern for me, and I do see that we've got two other potential banks that, or lending agencies that have also indicated, you know, kind of what I call a letter of intent or a letter of commitment. It's not absolute at this time. It can't be, because you don't have COL, final COL, and you don't have a lease, and I understand that. It's not going to happen until then. And so I'm trying to figure out how to get you guys to the, you know, capitalization point where I can feel comfortable with my city hat on, to really be comfortable that when you get to the bank, that they're going to say yes. And we're not going to be stuck, you know, a year down the line, or whatever the time is, with a project that hasn't been able to move forward, and you're out significant dollars for trying to move a project forward. And again, I realize I may be the lone dissenter with regard to this, because you both impress me. I think you can build it. I think you can operate it. I really do. I have belief in you as individuals to be able to do that. The hangup that I have right now is this whole issue of capital and availability of capital to make it happen. One of the thoughts I put to myself was, gosh, how would I do it if I needed capital right away, and what could I do? And, you know, I'm speaking off the top of my head here, you know, you have a lot of inventory right now, and inventory is something that can be secured against an interim loan, and that could provide you for cash right now. So for instance, if you had, you know, $500,000 worth of inventory, there are business lenders right now that you could go to and obtain a loan based upon your inventory that's secured. And you could walk to the city with this secured note that says you now have in your bank account a line of credit for $300,000 or whatever the number may well be, and by gosh, there is the money that's available to, you know, at least do this initial project. You don't have to use it if it's not needed, but it's an absolute... You don't have to use it if it's not needed, but it's an absolute available line that would be given to you prior to the project, actual financing having to occur. And so, again, I'm trying to think off the top of the head how to make myself feel comfortable with regard to the initial capitalization. I don't right now. I just say it off the top of my head. I don't feel comfortable right now. I could be more comfortable with something like that. I can't tell you what to do. I can't be your consultant, but I'm trying to understand how possibly it could work for you. So my concern would be without a better comfort level on my part as a seated city councilman representing the city for initial capitalization being fully available, that is more secure than what I see here, and the concern of credit-worthiness, possibly carrying into the future lending ability by another organization. I would feel uncomfortable moving forward supporting it. But there might be that methodology that I'm thinking about that you might be able to access funds. And we'll see how it goes from here. I'm open to listening to innovative kinds of discussions from my peers as well. So I'll move to Marla. Marla?
Can I interject? You know, not right now. Thank you.
Yeah. You know, it's interesting. This is a difficult project to evaluate, and it has been, and we've looked at it previously. And I think we all have a number of concerns. Certainly, the one that you've just raised is a very viable concern that we need to worry about because it puts the city at risk if the project is not successful. I've also always been concerned about the fact that there's no experience in hotel operations on the team. But I have to say, I'm gratified by the people that you have added to the team and the consultants you've brought along, and I know we respect them. So there is that risk. So that's on the one hand. But on the other hand, you have -- we have a process, and you have played by all the rules. And we have an RFP process, and there were two people competing for it, and yours was the better proposal, and you have done everything that we have asked of you. You've been very responsive to our concerns, our issues. You put additional resources into the project as a result. So I am left with a difficult choice. And I would like to, at this point, hear from the rest of my council members.
Okay. All right. Marla. Matt?
Going back a number of months, in terms of the RFP process, in terms of the two competing groups, this group won out. And they won out because of their vision in a number of different parts, including vision, enthusiasm, knowledge of the retail world. And we voted as a group to go with that RFP process. Going through it over the months, the project is strong, and the business plan has evolved They've demonstrated the various sources of income via paper. I do agree that if you look into the nuances, if you want to dig, dig, dig that 1.2 million, it's coming from different sources. But however, given the retail incomes coming from Ms. Hanson's business, their promissory notes, et cetera, et cetera, it appears as strong unless someone just came to us with a check saying that they had it in the bank, that this is a very strong bid monetarily for that. So in terms of the plan, showing this initial 1.2, knowing that they can use this to secure with their plan to go further, I've been very comfortable moving ahead with it. It's gotten stronger. They're going to fill a niche in that part of the Embarcadero in terms of the different leases that we've approved tonight, going to the Otterac, to the Boatyard, looking at the Libertina and to Roses. This will fill a niche on the Embarcadero. And the bid is strong. And knowing how in the last five or 10 years, there's been a number of different competitors for that area, I think in terms of what's been brought to council, turned down by council over the years, this is as strong as that I've certainly seen on my time. So with that, I'm prepared to approve and move ahead.
Thanks, Matt. Red?
I'm very impressed with what Sharice and Travis have accomplished during the past four months. They have done everything that we asked them to do. And as John said, their situation looked very weak four months ago, and we told them what they needed to do to strengthen it, and they have done that and more. They've talked to all of the right people. Business ventures are always going to be a risk. That's the nature of business. Risks are mitigated by the caliber, the people who are pursuing the venture. And I am very satisfied with the enthusiasm and the resourcefulness of these applicants. When I look at the alternative, if we say no tonight, where are we? We are left with a vacant piece of property that has no one taking it to a better purpose. The capital that I see on hand is $900,000. That is firm. They need 1.2 million to continue with the project, and I feel confident that they can reach that goal. So I also like the idea that we are building a local, small business into a larger business with local people. So to me, they have done what we asked them to do, and I'm ready to approve the COL.
Thanks, Red. Appreciate everybody's comments as I speak into the mic. This has been a long process. I appreciate Sharice and Travis. You've worked hard on this. Travis, I don't particularly care public speaking myself, so, you know, you guys have put yourself out there, and you've done really hard work, so I commend you on that. We started on this process with the RP and did select you. I was one of those that agreed to that RP. You know, and I did extend some of my frustration over part of the process and how we got there. And as we came back to the second portion of the COL, myself and others on council wanted to ensure that there was some performance measures in place. And that's where we started off into this area. This is really quite new. And I think for you guys to go through that, good on you. My initial, you know, second go-round didn't feel comfortable with the level of risk. I think it's great that you are comfortable and working hard and taking the risk that you want to do to get to this project. I wasn't supportive the last go-round. We set some performance standards for you all to come back. You know, I know you've dealt us with the feedback, the plans and the consults that you had. For me, I don't see -- I'm not comfortable with the risk. So I still see the capital side of it in where we're at. And so for me, I'm not, I'm still not supporting of this. I admire where we're at with it, but I'm, you know, I guess I'm still where I'm at in the last go-round in not supporting where we're at, just not thinking that any year from now, from where we are, where we're capitalized in the project, if we're strong, is where we need to be to get there. So that's where I'm measuring this, and that's where I'm at tonight. So, but I'm very supportive of how this council will come to a decision and ready to move on. So those are my comments. So I think we know where -- Sharice, we're just getting into the discussion. We've had a couple hours of discussion, so we're going to just stand the discussion part at this point. And then I'm going to turn over to my colleagues. And I think we've got John and Marla to come to their decision. Thanks. Marla?
Is it just Marla?
Yeah.
Yes, just Marla. Well, the one thing that I would like to say, and what's troubling to me, I think, is the whole process that we use to go market the properties that we have in Morro Bay. And I think that's, it's disturbing to me that we don't get more interest in our properties. And I say that because I think we have to do better. And I'm hopeful that maybe this broker approach will get us more interest from -- we would like to have a better choice when we are evaluating some of these proposals. And I, but I also have to respect the work that Sharice and Travis have put into this project and how far they've come, and the fact that there is no viable alternative on the table at this point. So as much as I would perhaps like to see them get financing sooner, if that were at all possible, and if John's suggestions, if you take that seriously, I would then support that we continue to move ahead.
Okay. Any other comments or ready for a motion?
I'll move. I will move that we accept the TLC Family Enterprises' input and continue the process, the COL process, or the process we've established. I'm not sure what the motion should be, but Joe can help me.
What I'm hearing is that you want to --
I deem that its submissions are responsive to the COL requirements as discussed in the staff report.
I would second that.
So we have a motion by Marla, a second by Matt. So just for clarification on the motion?
Yes. Let's read it again for everybody.
Marla?
I make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation and deem TLC's submissions responsive to the COL requirements as discussed in the staff report and continue with the process that's established in the milestones.
That's for clarification. We have a motion by Ms. McPherson, a second by Matt. Without any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No. So the motion carries 3-2 dissenting, irons, and heading. Okay. All right. Moving on. Next item on the agenda, item C2, receive water reclamation facility fiscal year 2016-17 fourth quarter program budget update and provide comments and direction as deemed appropriate. And starting us off on this, Rob or Jen? Okay?
Please.
Okay. So, okay, all right. So folks, I'm getting one minor request for just a two-minute recess after that. So if we could just take a two-minute recess, then we'll dive right into it. All right. Thanks for bearing with us. Okay. AGP says we're live.
All right.
Forgive me.
No problem.
If you could start where you'd left off, or not, to start at the beginning, that would be great. I think it's very important, yeah.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, council members.
Well, you didn't have to go through that.
Just got a call on city manager.
Thanks.
Just wanted to give a brief introduction and commentary about the Worf project financial reporting, and also just a nod to Finance Director's work in kind of uncovering some errors that occurred in the past and just what it means moving forward to be transparent. Public confidence and trust in the government is fundamental for a thriving democracy. For the city of Morro Bay, and particularly for me as the city manager, it's key that we earn and maintain the public's trust and faith in our management of tax dollars and the city's finances overall. We must demonstrate that we're acting in good stead with the community's resources and spending taxpayer and ratepayer money wisely. In addition, the community should expect that we will provide timely, provide them with timely and accurate data regarding our finances so they can review our work and verify what we are doing. With that in mind, our community and city council has requested of staff, particularly me and the Finance Director, to provide timely reporting on city finances, which is completely reasonable, and in particular around the Worf project, given the public interest on this project. The reporting is intended to keep our community and city council informed on how these funds are being used and spent. City council requested at its November 14, 2017 meeting that staff be prepared to provide them and the public with an update on Worf finances in December. There had been a pause in reporting for obvious reasons for 2017 as the city was going through a series of transitions in moving into a new city manager and finance director, understanding it would take some time for us to get up to speed on the financial system. Clearly, we want to be able to respond as quickly as possible, but we have to have confidence in what we're going to tell you before we say anything. So city staff responded by reviewing the financial reporting related to the sewer fund and the proposed Worf project. Through a comprehensive review of the related financial documents and the city's financial system, staff noted several issues and reported them to council and the community once we had a full understanding of those concerns and issues. From my perspective, whenever errors of this cumulative magnitude occur, it's easy and quite natural to quickly seek someone to blame, or worse, ascribe malintent. I can tell you emphatically that this was simply a human error, unfortunate as it was, and likely resulted from the fact that the city was in a tumultuous period in transitioning from one administration to the next at the time when the error occurred itself. During transitions, there are known issues that you anticipate will arise, in particular decreased productivity, as well as unknown consequences, as this one, I would say, falls into that category. Despite this setback, I am fully confident in the talents of our staff, in the Finance Department, and across the board, and I appreciate their commitment to excellence and transparency. Should that not have been the case, I would not have accepted this position. I am further confident that we will use this issue as a teaching moment for the organization by looking closely at our processes and taking action where needed to improve together. I would like to conclude by saying thank you to the community for your understanding, for your continued engagement. for your continued engagement with your local government. I would now like to proceed with the presentation and move to the next slide. What the Finance Director, Jen Callaway, is going to present you with is the fourth-quarter update on the WORF project from last year. And also, in that, provide council an opportunity to ask questions and provide comments. And then following that discussion, move into the errors that, you know, we've put into the addendum to this staff report and explain how it happened and how we intend to move forward. So I'll turn it over to Jen.
Thank you, city manager. Rob's going to pinch hint, I think, over there because this thing does not appear to be clicking. So thank you, Rob. Scott mentioned that the genesis of this came from the last council meeting and the request to have a fourth-quarter update. So our proposal, since there's two related topics here, but the proposal is to kind of bifurcate. And let's talk about the actual first quarter, fourth-quarter expenditure report and update. Take a pause, answer any questions you have, and then have a discussion about the cash balances. And that might try to simplify maybe the conversation a little bit. So if we do that, these are a little bit difficult to read. I'm learning every minute on this job, and I'm learning that pixelation with this is not as good as it is on my computer in my office. For the council members, there's copies of this on the dais for you. For the community, I think there were, there's probably sufficient copies back on the back table now for those that are still here. And I will clarify and read through this for you. This is a snapshot of what was provided in the attachment to the report that was provided to the WORF CAC committee on December 5. The purple circle at the bottom is highlighting the fourth-quarter expenditures, $342,711. So those are the expenditures that occurred from April through June 30. On the next slide, we have the year-to-date expenditures. Again, this is in attachment one to the staff report. It's the same chart, it's the far right-hand side, and there's a column labeled year-to-date expenditures, which totaled $1.3 million. The next slide is the project inception to date expenditures. I believe this began calculating expenditures in March of 2013. So the $3.58 million is what the city has expensed as of that date through June 30. Okay. This is all the information that was provided to the WORF. I did make a statement during, during the WORF CAC, I did make a statement that cash balances were not presented at that time. I had open questions on those. I had contacted prior staff, but I didn't have any certainty at that point that I wasn't wrong, given how new I was. I was thinking I was missing something. So until I was able to confirm that, we didn't provide cash balances and didn't go into detail at the WORF. So those charts in the attachment one is what was provided. We did receive about six or seven questions prior to the WORF CAC meeting from one of the committee members that was not able to attend. They came in about a couple hours before that, which we were grateful for an opportunity to do whatever research I needed to do, and Rob had a chance to review those as well. The responses to those questions are summarized in the addendum, and that's for the benefit of the council and the community in knowing what those questions were and how staff responded. So if there's any questions on the fourth-quarter piece of this, maybe we can take those now.
Okay, looking for questions from council at this point?
Want me to start or?
We'll start on the right. Looking to my left, but go ahead, Marla, go ahead and start.
Oh, no, you were looking at me.
Everybody's looking at their document, but you look like you're ready for questions.
Well, I actually just wanted to verify how we are currently keeping the financial records, because I know that some of the records are kept in Procore software, which the program manager has. And then our system has additional expenses, because not all of the expenses are run through Procore. So I would just like an explanation of how you integrate those two. And is it manually so that you, the report that you produced here comes from our system? Is that correct?
So I'm going to answer that. And this is going to be a test of what I've learned and heard in my past five weeks here. So Rob will correct me if there's anything I say incorrectly. The Procore system is a separate, independent system from our finance system. We own the license to it. The consultants also have access to that. They are running through that, any consultant or subcontract agreement that is not paid directly from the city. So that's what's being tracked through Procore. Correct? Okay. Our finance system is keeping track of what we pay to the prime, which is numly in most cases, and associates, and any other contracts. So there was, a question came up during WORF CAC about the Ferguson Group. We pay those directly. That's recorded in our finance system. The two live independent. They are not, they don't talk to each other. When you ask about how we're keeping track of the expenditures now, as of the start of this fiscal year, the Budget and Accounting Manager set up this as a project fund, so an independent fund that will track all the expenditures for the WORF as of July moving forward. And why that's significant is in the past, and what you'll see in the next part of the presentation, there's multiple sewer-related funds. And from when we started to charge expenses to this project, they hit a variety of those different funds. So when the community comes and asks for a report on what was spent and where, I can't generate that with just hitting a fund button and giving it to whoever's requesting it. We have to kind of compile those together. So going forward, we will be able to do that, understanding that it's as of July 1. So we'll have this kind of put-together piece or patchwork up until that point, and then we'll keep one separate accounting as of July 1, if that answers your question.
Well, so the report you are presenting to us now, it does include whatever is being tracked through Procore and whatever is being tracked through the city's system. So somehow that gets entered back into the city's system. So the city's system has all of the expenses related to the WORF?
Yes.
Right. And I know that this was an issue which we brought up before, the fact that there were, there wasn't a separate accounting for WORF. And I know that, is it your intention to go back then and for, when it wasn't a separate account, to make sure that we have captured all of the WORF-related expenses so that we can have an accurate picture of? And I know you're using as the start of this project, when actually we started, the new council took over and we stopped moving, you know, pushing a project on the beach. So that's the start of this project, correct?
So we've had conversations, and I personally feel like it would be useful for background for me and knowledge for me to go back, you know, probably about till March of 13, because I can track through the spreadsheets that were kept then and categorize them as much as I can with how we're going to account for it going forward. I think that would be useful, a useful exercise to go through. So that's the intent. I will say we spent quite a bit of time this week on cash balances, so knowing that budget is coming forward and we do have to, you know, prioritize where we're spending our time, so.
Right, right. No, I understand. And I know that there is concern about tracking expenses to a budget. And obviously, we don't have a budget for the entire project yet because we haven't got biz, we don't know what it's going to cost. But we do have a budget for the front-end program planning. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. So council approved a capital project budget with their budget documents that we expected to spend about four-plus million dollars this fiscal year on the project, and we're tracking that against the expenditures.
Right. And that's where these numbers come from. So when it shows that we've only spent 22%, that's against the budget that was established for this project.
Correct. Just a little more on the Procore relationship with the project. It's a project management tool. It does more than just track invoices. It's, what we're using it for now is basically to, as a workflow for the approval process to make sure that it goes to the right people to get approved. Once the final approvals, we print out those invoices and then run them through our finance software so they get charged against the city finances. But every invoice that the city receives is tracked through the city finance system.
Okay. And I just wanted to verify that we aren't re-entering data to produce the reports, because I know that the WORF CAC wanted a particular format for the reporting. And I know my concern is that it doesn't take existing data and put it, re-enter data, because that's when mistakes occur. So presumably, it's a report that you can generate from our current financial system. Is that correct?
Going forward?
Yes.
That's the goal.
Okay. All right. And do you think it would be possible to come up with a more simple format for the report? Have you thought about that at all? Or is that asking too much at this point?
I think it is. It's going to involve a conversation of what is useful. From a, you know, a finance person's perspective, it would be useful to have budget fourth-quarter and maybe a comparison of prior fourth-quarter. You don't have a ton of fourth-quarters to compare to here, but as the project goes forward, if that makes sense, and maybe, given the type of work, it doesn't, but those are the conversations we need to have. But I think, once we figure out the useful information, we can maybe produce it in a, in a way that's meaningful to the community and the council, and a little self-explanatory.
All right, this is my last question. Are you able to separately track expenditures that relate to the sewer versus the water and the recycling aspect of the project, which even though we've now combined these, in the water and sewer rates, they're separate? And we want to make sure that any expenditures that actually relate to the recycling part of the project are tracked separately from what goes to the sewer? Are we able to do that yet?
We would have to set up separate project numbers and classify what those expenses would be for water-related costs. I'm going to say something that may be outside of my expertise, but legally, I don't think, we don't have to define where that line is right, right now at the present time. The costs for the overall project are, I'm not sure, I'm going to maybe use an analogy to answer this. I'm not sure it makes what difference in the rates, what pocket we take the money out of to pay the bill, our sewer pocket or our water pocket, to the overall ratepayer, because we control both water and sewer rates.
Right. But I would have to ask Mr. Panone if, in fact, they are two separate rates, and we're not supposed to be charging anything more than the service costs, we would need to keep that separately, I'm assuming?
I think that's true eventually. Because of the nature of the work that's being done now, it's so interrelated and not specifically for one or the other, that that, we don't need to do that differentiation. But eventually, there's going to come a time when a dollar is going to be spent on the reclamation and not on the sewer, and that's where we'll have, we'll have to have that.
I'm anticipating the 218.
I understand.
All right. Those are my questions. Thanks.
Thanks. John?
So, just along those lines, that prompts a question. If you go back to the Bardo's and Wells study, there are, the two separate studies, one for sewer and one for water rates. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and that, that means that, by law, they have to be separate because they're separate enterprises. And the expenses associated with one track directly to costs that are being allocated to that enterprise that then pass on to rates that are determined from the costs associated with the enterprise.
That's true. But if, if the dollar's being spent to prepare a report that has 20 pages and 10 of the pages are sewer pages and 10 of the pages are water pages, you don't need to split the dollar that precisely?
Right.
And that's where we are.
Right.
I would say that's where we are now.
Yeah.
But we're, we're going to soon pass that point when we have to be more specific.
Right. Good. Thanks for that. I just wanted to clarify, because that is the way I understand the enterprises. This is, this is a created report, as I recall, by the WORF CAC Subcommittee that was created for project management, that data is dumped into from whatever systems you collect it. This is not just press a button from the city's system and it's created. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So translation errors could even occur on this as we move dollars into this report from others, because it's not just being pulled off of an accurate system. I'm just, that's, yeah.
Manual errors could occur.
Right.
In theory, you have enough checks and balances and...
Okay. So my, my specific question's on, I'll get the one I can read. That's yours. And thanks for blowing it up. It's so much nicer. The, the, this is the fourth quarter of fiscal year 1617, and I guess this is a question, could I anticipate in the future, as a city councilperson monitoring this project, that we could get more timely reports that would be up to date and would be representative of, let's say, we already have payments for the first quarter of 2017-18, and really we're two months after that? And would it be reasonable to expect that, that within two months of the quarter, we could get a report on the current quarter, the past current quarter?
So typically, you would get a first-quarter update on any project or fund about November. So I'm still chasing the train. That's my thing.
Right, right.
Full speed ahead. I'm running as fast as I can, but...
And I, this is not pointed at you at all, or Scott, I just want you to know that. I'm just asking a question because it's been, it's a concern of mine, and it's been asked by a number of constituents. This is a dated report. We are now into December, and we're getting data for the end of the last fiscal year, which is really, which really ended on July 31st. Excuse me, June 30th.
June 30th.
June 30th. So this is data through June 30th.
That's...
So a little dated. So in the future, it would be, I'm just thinking, once you get caught up and everything's cool, we would get the last quarter about two months after that quarter was ended.
Your reasonable expectations are November for first quarter, February for mid-year or second quarter.
Got it.
And then if there's a third quarter, you know, you're looking at May-ish, keeping in mind that you're heavy into budget at that point.
Got it.
So that throws a little curveball.
Good. Thanks for that. So just a couple of questions on this. There's a, there's a year-to-date one, and then there's, there's the quarterly one. Is that correct? In other words, there's one that's from project inception, all costs?
Yes. So slide number three.
That would be slide number three?
Is the quarterly. So that is the period from April through June.
Is slide number, okay, yes, got it.
Slide number four is year-to-date, so for the entire 1617 year.
Okay.
And then slide number five is from March 2013 to June 30.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask you. What, what would be the date of inception? Would that be March of 2013?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great, thanks. And just two little questions on the data, the actual data. And maybe it's a Rob question. Rob, why, why was there no budget for line item fifth, excuse me? I'm sorry, I'm trying to read it.
We're on page 123.
Well, I'm on my, yeah, 123 of the, of the staff report. Thank you. Why was... Why was there no budget for, and what is economic outreach? We have expenditures of 1801s, or a variance of 18017, expenditures year-to-date 18017. What is economic outreach and why didn't we budget for it? Anybody know?
Economic outreach, my estimation is that is our rate study analysis. I would have to go back and see whose invoices went to that, but...
Well, that's 6105. It says rate study preliminary analysis costs.
Uh...
Is it explained on the sheet there?
It is explained on the sheet. Can I interfere?
Sure.
And object?
Thank you.
Explain it to me, yeah.
Yes. Economic outreach are the costs for lobbying support from state and federal representatives and agencies.
Right. No, got that. What, so that's the Ferguson Group only?
That's the Ferguson Group.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's what I was trying to get to. Thanks so much.
In the new budget, we call it something different. Government relations.
Okay. Thanks. I'm just trying to understand. Why didn't we budget for it? Because that was a council action mid-year or something or later in the...
Didn't budget for it.
Well, there's no budgeted amount.
It was after the budget was approved when the Ferguson Group contract was approved. So you will see something coming back in mid-year to estimate what's remaining on our contract with the Ferguson Group.
Now, I apologize if I appear inept. I'm trying to help some of the public understand that questions were asked of me, so I'm just vetting this for the public and daylining it. Thank you for that. That was a council-approved contract that occurred after the budget.
Yes.
Cycle. Thank you. I didn't just want to say that. And then on page 123 of 135, that item specifically, gosh, I have to track that back, a 5199 software license and fees. 42,204.
That's our pro-core.
Is that pro-core?
Yes.
Okay. And the projected budget was zero for the quarter. So how often do we pay this? It was zero for the quarter, yet I guess the fiscal year-to-date is 42204. How often?
We pay that annually.
Annually. And it's 42 grand a year, correct?
Forty-two grand. Well, there's an escalation in our contract with them.
Okay. Oh, okay. So next year, it might be a little bit higher then.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. And thank you for the opportunity to ask those questions.
Jen, we went through the first few slides and you were, we were pausing to ask questions on those. So I just want to regroup and that's where we're at and looking for any questions based on those first few slides. And I'm looking to Red and Matt. Seeing none, we can move on.
Okay.
Do you have, okay, go ahead.
Yes, Jennifer, I do have two questions. Talking about these reporting and whatnot, do you envision, as you come up, get better up to speed in the coming quarters, months, doing a more, making this, the public accounting available to, and how do you want to do that for the public? Or how do you envision it?
So that's agenda is, I think it's scheduled for the January 9th meeting, the first meeting. And it's, you know, kind of a comprehensive discussion on that, specific to the WORF, but citywide and all of our funds. The requests that's come across, we're required legally to provide monthly reporting. We've had some conversations with community members on what they're looking for and what they think would be helpful. So we have some kind of concepts right now, but that'll be next on the to-do list is to refine that and bring back a recommendation for the council. So, yes.
And so, I mean, we spoke the other day about this. So you could envision perhaps making some sort of account of, it could be just as simple as in receipts coming in and going out and then also in some sort of format, correct? But that, I mean, I understand is we're going to talk about that in January, but there could be a number of different formats to show the public.
Right. We're looking at our accounts payable registries and making those available. That will show all the expenditures during the two-week period as well as cash balances by fund.
Got it. And in terms of the WORF incoming monies, and when we talk about it separating the sewer monies from the water monies, and I know I asked a question yesterday with you and Scott, knowing that we had our last 218 vote in 2014 and that came online, I think in 2015, and maybe Joe, you can get in the conversation because that's what we talked about yesterday's. Is there a way to separate the increase in funds to show the public in prior to 2014? Here are the sewer funds, water funds, but then after the 218 vote of that year, becoming active in 2015, we can show those increased funds? Can we do, can we separate that?
You mean have a document that tabulates what they are or after the tabulated, do something different with the information?
Your first one. So in terms of before, you would have an accounting of your sewer and your water. But then after that 218 vote, your incoming monies are increased. So you would show that increase of money and how those 218 monies were being used.
I'm sure there's a way of finding, you can...
So we're not legally constrained?
No. From having a report to show how much money was raised, what was, how much revenue was generated from the fees that were, the rates that were increased and having that set, that number calculated and put it on a piece of paper?
Yes.
There's nothing that legally prohibits that.
Okay. No problem.
I'm assuming that that's functionally something that's able to be done just by some mathematics.
Got it.
I'm a lawyer, not a mathematician.
No, in terms of the transparent, no. And the reason I say it like that, and perhaps I'm being too simplistic in not being able to express it properly, is you have the sewer funds and water funds coming in, then you have a 218 vote, and we have had a number of questions. I mean, I bet all of us have dealt with and all of you probably also. How have we been using those 218 funds from 2014, 15?
If you have a dollar that was generated and had, that you received in 2012, and there was a dollar that you received in 2015, trying to track which dollar went to pay which bill, maybe difficult.
Mr. Mayor? If I could, I could answer it, I think.
Certainly.
But it, when we asked Matt for the 218 Bardo's and Wells study update on the fund balance for both sewer and water, that's the time that that will come, and that's supposed to come in January, if I recall correctly. Is that right, Rob?
Yes, I believe so. Just, I think I understand the question. So let me restate it back to you and maybe we can all understand. What were the rates prior to the rate increase, then the rates increased? That difference, how were we spending that towards the WORF? So to add complications to that, not all of the rate increase was just for the WORF. It incorporated new capital costs, new operating costs. So yes, we can do that math. We have all the data to do that math, but it's just not as simple as subtracting one rate from the other and saying all of that goes to the WORF. Because the new rates were based on more than just the expenditures to the WORF.
I guess that leads me to another question, Rob. Knowing that, as you say that, that's a very good point, because is there a list of where that 218 money goes to?
There, in the rate study, we estimated what the costs were in outer years, so we have that information. The list of where it actually goes spent is through our accounting software. So we have at least three different funds' numbers that use sewer rates to pay, we have at least one capital project fund, we have the sewer collection funds, which is solely Morro Bay, and then we have the 599 fund, which is the Cayucus Morro Bay, which we pay a portion of. So yes, everything that gets spent is in our financial software.
Okay. No, and that's a wonderful point. And the reason, I guess, I'm belaboring it is we want to make very clear, especially going forward for this next possible 218 vote, that this 218 vote that we passed had in 2014 was not solely for a WORF project. There was a number of other items that it went to.
It updated all of the aspects that feed into the rates. Operating expense increases, other capital projects, and the WORF project.
Okay. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Okay. Thanks, Jen. Back to you.
Okay. So moving forward, oh, that's fabulous. It's working now.
At least from this angle.
We wanted to talk a little bit about the relationship between budgeting and accounting. And this is significant because what we have ascertained is the errors came from the budgeting side of the documents that were provided and the information that were provided. So budgeting and accounting have some similarities. They're both fiscal systems. They're both for processing and planning and allocating, dispersing of monetary resources. They're interrelated and they must be coordinated, but it's significant to note that they live independent of each other. So the budgeting document, or the budgeting model, is really the planning model. It helps with the enactment and carrying out of the city's goals, objectives, general plan, any strategic goals. And it's a document that is an Excel and Word document combined. There's actually two components to it. And the review level is at the staff level, so there is not a third-party audit review of the budget documents themselves. The accounting side, Rob, is our financial system, and that is the software that tracks our expenditures and our revenues and all of our GASB entries that we need to make in our system. It is dependent on the budget in that you approve a budget and that gets entered into the accounting system. But again, was independent. And that's where not only is there staff review, there's the independent auditors come through and review all of the transactions that hit our accounting system. So when we were trying to think of an analogy of how to, you know, make this really simple, if you think about your monthly banking on a personal level, you get a bank statement from the bank every month. Some people still go through and record when they write a check in those check registries. I personally don't anymore, but a lot of people do. And those live independent, and you reconcile them at the end of the month and say, my accounting of what I spent matches what the bank said I spent. So that's kind of the analogy, two independent, separate, living documents, if that helps. So our sewer funds, there's multiple funds. We just talked about that. There's a revenue fund, an equipment replacement fund, accumulation fund, there's the Morro Bay, CS, what?
Baby Sanitation.
Cayucus Sanitation Water, Waste Water Fund, and there's several others that aren't listed here, such as those capital improvement projects. So when I say, you know, last Tuesday, I didn't have a comfort level that I was right, I really felt like I was missing something in one of these funds, that there was, you know, was accounted for somewhere else. So that's what kind of took this last week to piece together the puzzle. The sewer accumulation fund is the holding account, if you will, for the WORF project, any other capital outlays for the existing plant and the existing sewer system infrastructure. The revenue fund is where all of the user fees and interest and penalties come into. And then the sewer revenue fund also pays for the city's share of earning the current treatment plant. So the capital outlays for, outlays for the existing plant, for the WORF project, they all have to be accounted for in either the accumulation or the revenue fund. We need to show the expenditures have hit one of those funds because that is the revenue source for those. At year-end, excess revenues in the sewer revenue fund are transferred to the accumulation fund. Again, that's that holding or reserve fund. So you should always see a zero balance in the revenue fund at year-end. And the reason that's important is we're going to kind of walk through what we did on staff's side and what our thought process was to piece this together and understand what happened during the summer. So in the summer, you received sewer accumulation fund cash balances. It was provided in July of 2017. The blue boxes are a snapshot of what those were and how they were presented. If we move forward to the next slide, we'll take that same chart, and this will kind of build on each other here. So it doesn't print as well as it should, but hopefully you can follow the movement. We were able to go back and trace the ending cash balance in 1314, Rob, if you don't mind to hit the button, to the city's finance system. That ending cash balance will naturally carry forward to the beginning cash balance in 1415. So that happened and we could validate that. We could validate that the ending cash balance in 1415 matched the city's system that carries forward to 1516 beginning cash balance. The very small unreadable piece at the bottom is a snapshot of our city's finance system. It's a screenshot. You can see that the beginning balances, which is circled there and has the two large yellow arrows pointing down to it. And you can see to the far right, fiscal year 16 is circled. Those match and we're okay. Then we get to the ending cash balance, and this is where we got stuck. It does not equal, the $6.3 million reported does not equal what the city's cash balance is said in the books. That was $4.3 million. So that carries the problem forward because we know the ending cash balance is beginning cash balance in 1617. So Rob, those numbers should have been the $4.3 million. If we go forward, the question is, you know, how did this happen? Where did these numbers come from? And that was kind of our charge for the week. So if we go to the next slide, cash balances should come from the city's accounting system or double-checked and confirmed against that. The ones that were reported in July have come from the budget document, and that's the adopted 1718 budget. So staff went through and compared those balances to the budget document, and go ahead and click again. Again, I'm sorry you can't read this. It looks really good on my screen. So I took screenshots of both because I wanted to walk you through this and help the community walk through this and see what our work was to get to where we are today.
Jen, can I just ask, just interrupt, just for the audience, because you're referring to the slide that isn't really too readable for the audience. This will be available on our website, this presentation, for people to access and get through?
We can put it on the website, and it'll be part of the YouTube, you know, minutes as well from the meeting. But I think we could put it on our, on our website.
Thank you.
Tomorrow. Rob, if you click again, you're going to see the, the numbers are going to, if you keep going through, they're going to trace all the way through. And what we're showing here is how the sewer accumulation fund matches to what was reported. So that made us question where these accumulation numbers came from that were in the budget document. So if we go to the next slide, and you can go ahead and click again, we have a side-by-side. On the left is the revenue fund budget sheet, and on the right is the accumulation fund budget sheet. And if you can, we talked about the revenue fund zeroing out at the end of each year and the money transferred over to the accumulation fund. So if you hit, Rob, hit the next button, the $362,000 in fiscal year 1314 is transferred over to the sewer accumulation fund. It leaves you with a negative balance. And you can, Rob can click all the way through that, and that happens every year as it's supposed to. So what that told us at the staff level is that the issue lives somewhere on that revenue fund page. So that's where we really focused our attention. If you go to the next slide, we have the revenue budget page again, and I really have to emphasize that these are the budget pages. These are not from the city's system. It is what is in the adopted budget. The yellow circle is showing that we have fiscal year 1516. There's purple boxes. The 1516 numbers say on here that they are actual. They are in fact adopted numbers, and that's really easy to... and that's really easy to tell. If you could read those numbers, you would see that sewer user fees are $4,921, $4,921,000. Rental income is $20,000. Other revenues penalties is $25,000. You will never have even rounded numbers as actuals for a year, they have to be adopted. So that's really easy to pick out initially. The next issue, if, Rob, you click, and click again, please, the Morro Bay Cayucus Sanitary District Waste Water Treatment Plant expenditure is missing, and that is what that kind of middle purple box is showing. You can see in 1314, 1415, there's expenditures, there's budgeted expenditures for 1617, 1718, there's nothing in 1516. And because the actuals weren't picked up in that column, that was an expenditure that was missed, so that helped lead to the overstatement. If you hit one more time, Rob, there's no capital, one more time, please, there's no capital expenditures captured. So you won't see anything on this page that speaks to any capital outlay for either the Wharf or the current existing plant. So what that means is that $3.5 million is overstated in the budget document. It doesn't match to the cash on the books. If we go to the next slide, we have the revenue fund and the accumulation fund. And if, go ahead, Rob, to the next slide, and pull those both up. Again, the revenue fund is on the left, the sewer accumulation fund is on the right. If you hit that again, Rob, you're going to see a red underline shown up. I believe that was intended to be where the capital projects were supposed to be captured or the expense to that, and I'll tend to speak to my reasoning for that in a minute. But if we hit the next thing and consider that to be the capital or construction in progress, capital outlay, then we will see that, if you keep going, Rob, and you can keep going through this one for, if you hold right there, you can see that we don't have capital outlay in 1516, we don't have capital outlay in 1617, we do a little bit in 1718, and we have it on both the revenue and the accumulation fund. And that speaks to that double accounting issue that we'll talk about. So it's great that in 1718, we captured some capital projects in the accumulation fund. That 1.3 is not the totality, the books total up to about 1.8, so there's that missing, some of those missing CIPs. The amended budget captures a little bit, that isn't the totality in 1617 either. And then we have two areas counting for it in 1718, so that should not be the case. If you go to the next slide, Rob, we're going to talk about 1617 numbers. So we know we're starting with a cash balance that's overstated for the year. If we look at what happened in 1617, the first issue we ran across in 1516, with the city's share of the current treatment plant costs not being captured, that is captured in 1617, so that's good news. If we look at capital expenditures, again, they're not showing up. If you hit one more time, Rob, they're not captured on this chart, so we're missing some expenditures that would reduce cash balances. And then if you hit one more time, you'll note that there's, you know, still going to be a little bit of difference if you're trying to add up these numbers, and because we're working on a cash basis, we have to take into account accruals, prepaid, receivables, anything that is not necessarily picked up on these traditional budget reports. So that's what's kind of that mitigating difference if you're adding these up. So if we go forward, we felt comfortable at that point at the staff level that we've identified where the issues occurred and kind of how they occurred. The next step is to verify that what's in the accounting system is accurate, that all the money is accounted for, that we can have some comfort, that there's no misappropriation of funds or lost funds. So we contacted prior staff, both the immediate prior finance director and the retired finance director, Ms. Layton, with questions, worked closely with Susan, as she has a better history, clearly, of all these different funds. We did recreate the cash flow statement and were able to reconcile to those that comprised the net position for the sewer fund in the annual audit for 1516. We were off by about $2,000, which is the difference between staff's pension liability number and what the auditors had. So that gave us comfort level that we were accounting for all the money appropriately, and there wasn't any lost funds, per se. You know, number four is just reiterating that. And then number five, the previously reported cash balances really were overstated in the budget document. Essentially, what that means is, as a council and a community, you thought you had more money than you had, but you never had that money. It's not missing money, and I'm trying to emphasize that because I feel pretty comfortable with that at this point. To talk a little bit about 1718, a community member, Mr. Alexander, has brought this up in at least a couple meetings that I've heard in my short time here, so I'm sure even prior to that, that there was a double counting in the 1718 budget. That is that capital projects number, and it, you know, does appear that he's right. The current Wharf project is accounted for in the accumulation fund with that $4.2 million. It's also showing up in that revenue side at the $1.8 million. So we've, on paper, and we'll make the transactions happen for the accounting system as well, that 1.8 should be removed and not count as in this expenditure that will hit cash balances. Okay, so what does that mean? Because that's a lot of very little print that nobody can read and a lot of lingo in the finance world. So 1516, overstatement of cash balances, approximately $2 million. And, Rob, if you hit that again, kind of brings up a little bit larger of an image that hopefully you can read. The reported cash balance in July was $6.3 million at the end of 1516. Go ahead and hit that again, Rob. The books show 4.3, and we're comfortable that we can reconcile to that 4.3 number. In 15, in 1617, that 4.3 million with the green arrow carries down to the beginning balance. The ending cash balance was reported at 8.3, the books show 5.6, that's a difference of $2.6 million. And I want to emphasize here that this is a cumulative effect because they carry forward. So it's not 1.9 plus 2.6, that's cumulative. And then for the last entry, Rob, is 1718, again, that 5.6 will carry forward. When you take into account that double counting, we're really talking about a difference of about $800,000. And the last arrow that's going to come up when Rob hits that says that that's a budgeted year-end cash balance projection. And that's important because we've had conversations during the last council meeting, that is including a $4.2 million budget for the Wharf, and we don't expect at this point to spend $4.2 million on the Wharf project. So that 4.3 that's projected is likely going to be higher at year-end, so I just wanted to point that out. So if we take away all the fun animations of the arrows and the lines directing you to different spots, this is the bottom line. Ending cash balance, according to the books and what we can reconcile to, in 1516 was $4.3 million, in 1617, $5.6 million, and in 1718, budgeted is $4.3 million. So going forward, I think the city manager is going to speak to this, and then I'll kind of add in at the end.
Yes, thank you so much, Jen. Really appreciate all the hard work that you did in bringing former employees into the mix, as well as current employees, and doing the due diligence to make sense of something that's very complex. So moving forward, staff will continue to verify the reported cash balances for all city funds, and we will report back to city council and the community during our January finance discussion, anything we may turn up. And I think it's important to reiterate that we have met with interested community members prior to discovering this area, and we'll continue to do so. Currently working with the independent auditors group to verify findings, both of this issue and if we see anything else, so they're in play and wanting to help and understand the importance of this work. Number three, that January council discussion on monthly reporting of financial information is very important. A minimum will include biweekly account payable registers and the monthly cash balances. This is, in meeting with interested community members, this is what they would like to see. This is useful information in that it's kind of a data dump, it's the entire system, it's everything that we spend our money on, on a biweekly basis. That needs to be balanced against quarterly budget updates, which actually present an analysis and a big-picture view of what's going on in the story. So I think having both of those is really critical for the community. With the city manager hired and a finance director, you will have increased layers of review for your budget development, which is critical. So you have Jen, you'll have a budgeting account manager, department directors, and myself, who have spent many years developing and overseeing budgets. So we feel we have that really shored up, and also provide training, ongoing training for our finance staff, as well as staff in other departments that have, you know, dealings with accounting and budgeting. And also, just wanted to throw out, and Rob, next slide, please, myself and the finance director are going to make ourselves available for questions to go over this in great detail, the transactions, as this, you know, was useful, but there might be a lot of questions, and we understand that. So we reserve the following times in advance for questions and discussion with community members. Monday, December 18th, from 8:30 to 10:00 a.m. at City Hall, and then Tuesday, December 19th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at City Hall. We know some folks might not be able to make those times, so we can absolutely schedule a different time where our schedules all, you know, all line up. So just wanted to share that, and thanks again, Jen.
All right, thanks for the report. I was going to say, it's unfortunate news, but in some respects, but it was overstated in a way that it was explained that really good to be able to capture this and understand it, and the presentation was done in a way that, very helpful for me, and I'm hopeful that the rest of the council will speak to that as well. And I think we need to get into any questions at this point before we get into discussion, and then we have speaker slips. And because of the hour, I feel compelled to at least get into the speaker slips first, if we could, unless there's any other, no? Okay, let's get into the speaker slips right away, and thanks for your patience on this. First off, Barry Brannan, then Tina Metzger, and then Bob Keller. AGP, if you can come on up. Tina, do you want to come up and speak while they're helping him? Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Welcome, Mr. Collins, to our fair city. Tina Metzger, Morro Bay. On item C2, the one we're talking about right now, on page 125 of the council packet, the Wharf Consultants' Contract Summary states, "From inception through June 30th, 2017," what is the date of inception? How do you define that? And please put dates on future consultant contract summaries, not vague terms, such as date of inception. So that's my first question. Second, at the September 26, 2017, oh, okay, Morro Bay citizens have repeatedly demanded the city hire an owner's agent to look out for the interests of our water sewer ratepayers. And at the September 26, 2017 city council meeting, council members voted unanimously for the city council to reexamine the existing Wharf program management process and structure, and to look at available resources within the Public Works Department, and to make decisions for possible changes based on that. What is the status of the council's reexamination of the existing Wharf program management process and structure? And then my third question is, what is the council's reaction to the PERC Water Corporation letter to council dated September 7th, 2017, regarding requests for qualifications for design, build services, water reclamation facility, alternative design, project plan B, that could possibly save the ratepayers over $100 million? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Barry, you ready?
Good evening, Mayor, and council and staff, and welcome, city manager and finance director. The water reclamation facility project may be one of the most expensive capital projects ever undertaken by this city. I know each one of you personally, and I respect you, and I'm confident that you are doing your utmost to get the best value for the citizens, and I know that for truth. And I also know that the staff has worked on this project based on the goals and the directions that they've been given by city managers and by the council. However, the cost estimate is just exceeding what our town can pay for. There's just no question that we just can't afford it. I'd love that Cadillac, but that's just not going to work. So the size of the plant called for in the master plan was based on the loads and the volume of water from an earlier time. The numbers have changed dramatically, as some of the reports that I've shared with you have forwarded, they've gone down because of conservation. Obviously, they'll go down when Cayucus leaves. So our volume is down, even the last report I saw, even our average numbers are about half of what the plant's designed for. And so at the present time, we're asking contractors to provide us, in the RFQ, with a solution to the problem that we have yet clearly defined. We really haven't pointed out what we want. We haven't given a specific layout or design. We haven't done an EIR. We don't have assured fundings for 135 or 150 million, whatever it is, and we don't have any permits from the regional water quality board or the county. So we've asked a contractor to give us a price or give us an idea to do something. However, a company has made a proposal, that's not on the agenda tonight, to build a water reclamation facility that will meet our requirements and provide tertiary water that meets the California regulations for Title 22, and can produce recycled water to augment the city's water supply. Their proposal can be done for the money that's already approved in the last 218 vote. The consultants have written the RFQ and RFP that we have in such a way that precludes this type of company to even bid. If you read carefully in the RFQ we have, they shot for the moon, but they, in doing so, eliminated contractors who can provide us a lower-cost project. So please look at this project carefully, and try to find a better answer than the one you're now pursuing. And on the screen, you can see a rendering of what an alternative plant would look like that can be built for the amount of money we've already approved. Thank you.
Thanks, Barry. Bob? Bob Keller?
Bob Keller, Morro Bay. Welcome, Scott, Jen. Anyway, thank you for the good report and for the updates and transparency that you've done on this budget and cleaning it up. I accept the report and would like to move on with this budget, and so we can move on with our WRF project. And for, in the future, I think they're doing a good job. Just keep all our citizens updated, be transparent with all your reports. Anyway, I want to keep moving on with this project because I keep talking delays, delays are costly, and our priorities right now are, our top priority is cost and funding, and getting the EIR done. And of course, we're all worried about how we're going to pay for this plant, and they keep talking about the high costs, but I keep talking about, we should research our community to see if we have anybody that can research fundings, get grants, also contact can research fundings, get grants, also contact nonprofit organizations, and also federal and state funds might be available, and low-cost loans. And I think this will keep our costs down, if we could just research all this, all these options that we have available. I don't know much about researching for funding, but maybe somebody can help me with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. That concludes our public comment. I'll bring it back to council and have some responses to some of the questions. Rob, you got some, did you re-able to do that?
Sure.
I think there were some, I'll just go over some that I got. Date of inception, I think that was just more of a note on one of the spreadsheets.
March 1st, 2013.
I know that we had the discussion, you know, request for owner's agent that was discussed.
That's coming at the January meeting.
And the program manager is going to be the agenda January meeting.
January meeting, yes, sorry.
Exactly, yeah. And then the PERC letter, that was also one of the questions, and of course, is on the screen, and maybe you can start with that one.
Sure. The first question was, what's council reaction? I'm not going to try to answer that question. I can give you what staff's reaction is. We received that letter. The letter was unresponsive to the SOQ. It didn't comply with the requirements that we were looking for. The city is obligated to follow California state law, public contracts code, in their procurement of design bid entities, which requires a two-step process. SOQ, RFQ, request for qualifications, contractors, design bid, entities submit SOQs, statement of qualifications. The council community shortlists those contractors, requests proposals from them with a guaranteed maximum price. We believe that PERC Water was the one that submitted the letter. One of their contracting partners was at our required pre-proposal meeting. There was nothing in the RFQ that prevented PERC Water from submitting an SOQ to the city. The SOQ is a statement of how they are qualified to be invited to prepare a proposal. It's their project management team for the project. It's their finances on, it's their experience with building-like projects. It really doesn't spell out how they're going to design and build Morro Bay's project. That comes in the proposal phase. So, yes, they did have an opportunity to do that. They chose not to. They've chosen another route with their direct contact to staff and council without submitting SOQ. Should we want to entertain this alternative, which I don't really know what it is, I see some renderings of buildings, but I don't know what their proposal is for the treatment process, nor what capacity they're designing for? We would still need to follow the two-step process, the SOQ-RFP process as specified, as how, was codified with SB 785, I believe it was, that allowed general law cities to use design-build as a procurement method. Alternatively, I guess we could go design-bid-build, but we would have to know what types of innovative alternative processes they would be proposing, so we could prepare a design that we would send out to bid. So they were not prevented from the process. They chose a different route to get their request to the community. And if we do, council does want to entertain this, we still need to follow California state law, which will take time to do, risking WFIF funds and potentially SRF funds.
So one of the questions was that, at least in the statement, how does this proposal that was sent identify that it's a proposal, and they can build it for less, or for a significant amount? How does, how many pages of that is there?
I think there's four pages.
Four pages?
I don't see a single design diagram, other than renderings.
Yeah. I think it's, okay, I'll get, I'll make comments to that, but there's nothing in there that identifies that it can be built for X amount of money.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
One of the other questions or comments from the public was, we don't have an EIR, we don't have permits. That, as you know, you've seen the schedule as presented in previous meetings, that's on our list of things to do. Where our EIR is under preparation, because of the compressed schedule, we will not probably have a completed EIR before we're asking these contractors to bid. We will have a draft EIR before the end of the bid period. So we'll have a good idea what mitigation measures are, and we'll have allowances for that. We'll also have allowances for escalation, because council will be receiving proposals prior to having funding secured for this project.
Okay. Any other questions from, just from the public comment standpoint?
Right.
And then we can get into, back into the discussion on the agenda item that we have.
Right. Rob, could you address this issue of that we're proposing flows that are way overstated in the proposal, and that now they're half?
Sure. We've done, there's been some comparisons made between what happened in Los Osos and what's happening here. The community of Los Osos didn't have a collection system, nor a wastewater treatment plant to gauge their flows from. We do. We have many years of record. Yes, we have conservation that is taken account for. Our flows and loads do not include caucas's flows in what we're designing for, so we know that. We've subtracted those out. We understand that conservation is a way of life in the community, and that is factored into our flows and loads. We also have a fairly high peak flow, not just our wet weather peak flow, but when our hotels get full, and our vacation rentals and second homes fill up. We have a fairly high peak flow that we have to address with our wastewater treatment plant. The proposal for design is something that would handle a fairly consistent lower flow, and then those peaks and valleys will be mitigated through the use of flow equalization, an aerated tank up front of the plant. So, in my opinion, our flows are not overstated. We know that water conservation is a way of life in California. Fortunately or unfortunately, most of the water conservation comes through outdoor water use, which doesn't affect sewer. It's going to be very difficult for the community to get down lower than where we're at right now. Many homes have changed to low-flow toilets, flow restrictors on showerheads. In fact, we've seen water uses start to creep back up now that there's not that mandate from the state government to conserve water. So, yes, water flows, and the resultant sewer flows will be less, but we understand that, and are factoring that into the design.
Okay, thanks. Red, did you have something you wanted to follow up, or what you read?
Yes. Question was asked about what is council's reaction to the PERC letter?
Good for you.
And I can't speak for the entire council, but my response to it was, "Dear Steve, thank you for your letter regarding the RFQ for our WRF. I'm sorry that you did not attend the mandatory pre-SOQ meeting on November 7th," which they did.
One of their partners did.
Yeah, one of their partners did. "I regret that you are not participating in our RFP process. As you know from reading our RFQ, we are inviting alternative solutions to meeting the community goals for our project, and I was expecting, based upon previous conversations, that you would make a proposal. I actually don't know what the purpose of your letter is. You mention a project plan B that will cost the city less than $6.4 million per year, but you don't describe it other than a drawing of what the building will look like. As you know, anybody can say anything. Without specific plans, lifecycle guarantees, and associated design and construction costs, we have no way to judge. Thank you for your letter. I'm sorry that you chose to not participate." So that was my response.
Thanks. Great response, Red. So that was a response to public comment. We're really, we're really into the point where we have an agenda item, and I just want to get us back to where, you know, the purpose of the agenda item. And so we've gone through the questions, unless we feel we haven't really addressed some of the questions, it would be appropriate to get into discussion at this point. One more.
I just wanted to follow up on what, the question about the PERC issue, that I guess my reaction is, my goodness, I'm surprised. I mean, I don't understand a company that has had communications with a number of us, and we've had direct conversations with, that knew what our process was, would think that they could circumvent our process, and go outside of that understanding the legal requirements that we have, that were laid out very clearly in a number of meetings to us. And so I am flabbergasted, is all I can say. That's my response. And it's sad, because possibly there was a viable vendor there that could have participated. And so the only follow-up question I have is, is this the end game for them? Are they out, basically, as a result of where we are in the process? Or since they did attend the SOQ, am I right? SOQ meeting?
The pre-SOQ submittal meeting. They did, one of their funding partners did attend that, or one of their construction partners did attend that. They did not submit a timely statement of qualifications or SOQ to meet the process. We could start over again, would be the only way that they would be back in. We still have to follow the required regulations to procure a design-build contractor.
And did we get submissions? And is the deadline passed, correct?
Yes, we received four teams' submittals on the project.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, Matt?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep. Okay. I'd make a motion that we proceed on with our council meeting beyond 11 o'clock.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor, and second by Councilmember McPherson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries 3-2. Thanks. So, moving on, Matt?
I'm sorry to belabor the point, I know you want to move on, but some of our community members are saying, without a player like PERC, who is saying that the project can come in under $50 million and be satisfied by our existing 218 vote, that then we are obligated, and we're going to go to a $150 million plant. How can we respond to that, Rob?
So $150 million is the cost estimate with contingencies. We have not received bids yet. Through the proposal process, we'll receive guaranteed maximum-price proposals, along with lifecycle costs on the project. Really, the only other way to get to a more, closer to what the end construction cost is, is to not use the design-build process, but design-bid-build, where you have complete design plans that can be estimated on. That just doesn't make our funding timeline, though. So we have a firm submittal deadline for funding of a project by, I want to say, July 1st. I think the actual deadline is July 17th, but we need to get a funding application into EPA by that time.
Okay, so I'll just follow up with one statement on that. For me, having spoken with PERC, disappointed and personally lost credibility, in my view, but they're a professional firm, they know how to bid and respond appropriately, and they didn't. So, moving on to the rest of the report, so I'll look to Jen to get us going on this. Thanks.
So I think if there's any specific questions, maybe I can field those.
Okay. So we want, I'm sorry, Jen, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
That's okay. If there's any questions on the cash balance piece, you know, happy to answer those.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
There was one additional question from the public regarding when the council is going to come back to review the program management.
That's on the agenda in January.
We responded.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Good for catching that. Okay. Marlos, you had?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to, you know, say how much I appreciate this report, how much I appreciate all of the work and effort that went into it. And I really understand that we have a new staff, all of our finance staff, almost all of them are brand-new, and they didn't have that institutional memory, and they were detectives that were determined to get to the root of the problem, and I am just so grateful, and you know, I am now confident that moving forward, we're going to be on the right track with the finances. So I just want to say thank you.
Thanks, Marlos. John?
No questions, but I just need to echo that. You guys are fantastic. I spoke with Jen the day of, I believe, the day after, there was a question mark, and it happened as a result of her being asked to look over a document that was going to go to WRF-CAC, and she said, at least in our conversation, that I need to be comfortable with any numbers that go forward, so I want to do some research and look into the issue, and thusly found the issue. And so I am extremely proud of our new team, and what the work that they're doing, and very much appreciate your quick response, your detective work, the timeliness, and Scott's oversight and direction. And I appreciate the follow-up plan that you guys have for mitigating this, being transparent with the public, having public meeting time available is, kudos to you for that. That's wonderful, and I'm just so grateful and thankful that, you know, we have individuals like you working for us in this city. So, thanks so much.
Matt? Thanks, Red?
Yeah, thank you guys very much. You're making us look good.
I just have some closing remarks as well. Scott, first of all, thanks for your letter that you sent out in regard to this report in the air that was posted on the website, and that you spoke to tonight. Jen, thanks for all the hard work. And I know there was some tension and nervousness over this, and I will say that it's heartening to know that in your comments, Scott, about having trust in the community over something so important as this, and part of my comments to both of you during this is, don't feel as though the weight of this is all on your shoulder, because council bears the weight of all this as well. And we too believe in making sure that the community and the public feels there's trust out there. And I know it's difficult, I know that we're, you know, we look at something that was sent to us that may imply that there's some alternatives, and we have to get through that. We, I think one of, this particular report tonight was done so clearly for me, and just the process and the way it did, there's, you know, to me, there's a lot of confidence and faith in moving, where we are moving forward. That done in just a short few, four to five weeks, coming to Morro Bay, so... few four to five weeks of coming to Morro Bay. So, both of you, thanks very much. But that doesn't fall short with all the other talented department heads that we have and all the... And then your staff as well. Jen, you've got some new staff. And just as one more note, that a year ago, the council was asked by our staff if we wanted to fund another full-time employee in the finance department. And council declined that full-time employee in finance, understanding that we had gone through an audit with the Poon Group. They'd identified some things as far as staffing within the finance group. So, we understand that there's some challenges in staffing. You know, you, Jen, actually have some opportunities to identify that and organize as well, as well as Scott. But we, you know, at the beginning of the fiscal year, made a choice not to employ one more full-time employee in the finance department, and we will, as a council, be able to look at that, you know, next fiscal year and then understand what the organization looks like with your help. So, just appreciate. Know it seems a little bit long-winded, but I just definitely wanted to send out the appreciation for the work. And with that, unless there's any other comments, we could conclude Item C3 as a receive and file. Excuse me, Item C2. Okay, just a receive and file. All right, that'll conclude Item C2. Thanks, and then we'll get on to Item C3. Item C3 is a review of council subcommittee-proposed changes to council policies and procedures and advisory board bylaws, adoption of Resolution Number 6517, amending the advisory board bylaws regarding appointment and qualification of members and meeting frequency for the Rec. and Parks Commission. Going to have Dana start out on this, and then our subcommittee will have some comments as well. Dana, thanks very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mayor and council. This should be a pre-brief, I think. At the August 22 council meeting, the council established a subcommittee consisting of Mayor Irons and Councilmember McPherson to review existing policies in return with possible revisions for council consideration and adoption. The subcommittee has started its review and identified several areas of consideration and is requesting council concurrence. These are the appropriate areas of focus. One item that is more time-sensitive than the others is the number of members and meeting frequency of the Recreation and Parks Commission. Staff will be noticing current and upcoming vacancies, advisory board vacancies tomorrow, and the council's decision regarding Resolution Number 6517 will determine the number of vacancies that are noticed to be filled for the Recreation and Parks Commission. And with that, I will turn it over to Mayor Irons and Councilmember McPherson.
Dana, thanks very much. So, tonight for discussion, we can get into the request for the park and rec portion of the advisory board bylaws, and then the discussion on, from the subcommittee, on the overall view of the policies and procedures, both with council and advisory reports. So, we can get into some delivery of what we've attached into the staff report. I'll look to Marlis to help with that. I don't have any speaker slips for this item, but we'll go through that process as well. Go ahead, Marlis.
Should we talk about both issues at the same time?
Sure. We have the first item teed up. If we want to just cover the second part of this, and then we can get into the questions and discussion, one item at a time.
Okay.
I think it'd be appropriate.
All right. Well, Mayor Irons and I did meet as a subcommittee, and we did look carefully at both the city council policies and procedures and the advisory board handbook. And our suggestions are included as an attachment. We honestly felt that the council's policies and procedures was pretty thorough, and we would not change any policies, per se. We might add additional language to clarify some points, just like what we mean by study sessions and use of... Just minor things, but no major changes to the council's policies and procedures. When it came to the advisory board handbook, the way it's currently organized, it's very minimal in policies and procedures. It actually directs advisory board members to the council's policies and procedures and suggests that they should read them and pick whatever seems to apply to them, but substitute advisory board. And when I looked at it from that point of view, there's one whole chapter that really doesn't apply at all, and then there's a lot of language that doesn't apply, and we're asking them to try to figure out what does. So, the main suggestion here is that we would, in fact, incorporate some of that language that's relevant for the advisory board from the city council policies and procedures into the advisory board handbook. And we've made a list of some of the areas that would be good to include so that they really don't have to go to the city council's policies. And the only one that is left off of here, and I saw Barbara Spagnola, who was the chair of the Citizens Finance Advisory Board, and she recommended that we also include the procedure for reporting absences for meetings. So, that's something I would add to that list. But I think at this point, all we're really looking for is if you concur with this general approach, we would have staff prepare the document, and it obviously will come back, and the subcommittee could meet again to review it. So, that would be the process for moving forward. My hope is that, and I don't know if this is true, that it could be done when the new advisory board members take office, which is February 1st. I don't know if that's realistic, but it would be nice. The other issue concerns the Recreation and Parks Commission. And I have actually, I was curious to know where the idea came from to reduce the number, and I reached out to Bob Swain, who was the vice chair, and he indicated that at one point, it was five members, and that they have discussed it, and they don't see any need for seven members. So, they are in basic agreement to go back to five members. So, that's my report. That's my comments.
Okay, so, based on the information that Marlis spoke about from the subcommittee, this is just guidance, and so, the opportunity to have discussion from council on items that you may see, you may want to have added, we can definitely do that right now. There was also suggested, there shouldn't be anything precluded if later on, you, beyond this meeting, you say, "Hey, here's three things that I think are pertinent." You could send those to staff, Dana, and then she would be the person to incorporate that, and the subcommittee would work in that manner. So, we could get into a little bit more discussion on various items, but I think really, this is a good working point for us. And, you know, it would be something that we would come back with at any rate for everybody to look at the specifics that were developed, and just looking for, you know, concurrence, guidance, and feedback. So, any comments? We'll just start this way down.
Okay. Just a question regarding the park and rec recommendation. What does staff say, and do staff concur? Staff members, Director Rick, Mr. Kurt, I mean, have we talked to staff? I know you said you spoke to the vice chair, and he suggested moving to five members like it used to be. What does our staff feel?
I would have to ask Dana.
Dana, yeah?
Yes, I spoke with Mr. Carmichael, and he supports the change. It has been challenging for them to have a quorum with seven members. So, if they were to be reduced to five, then they only need three to conduct a meeting. That would be helpful to them. He's also a difficulty filling an agenda for eight meetings in a year, and that was just a recent change done in 2016, I believe, to go from six to eight per year. So, he would prefer to go back to six meetings per year.
Thank you.
Okay. Matt?
Yes, I had a question. Dana and/or Marlis could... If they got reduced to five members, would we have four Morro Bay, one Los Osos members? Is that... Or would that have to be decided upon later?
It's actually in the resolution that it would be at least four members are voters and live in Morro Bay. So, one could live somewhere else. They wouldn't necessarily have to, but at least four would have to live in Morro Bay and be registered voters, so 18 or older.
Okay, I didn't... Yeah, I don't see that here. Okay, no problem. That makes sense. Sure. And just for the record, I would also, I would be in concurrence to not necessarily go through the brick and mortar of this agreement right now, but let it go back to staff and to the subcommittee.
Okay. Red?
Under the proposed changes to the advisory board handbook, item number five is include training requirements. And what is that? Is that stuff like discrimination in the workplace and...
Brown act.
Just... Yeah, okay. And then for the RPC, Dr. Swain is actually chair this year. He was elected chair. And one of... We were fortunate, I believe, that we had a high school student elected or appointed to the commission. Unfortunately, she missed so many meetings that she's being replaced, or not replaced. Yeah, okay, voluntarily resigned, yeah. So, that's part of the problem. And so, my observation is in concurrence with the staff recommendation as well.
Okay. And so, just to make comments on the rec and park, good feedback to understand from staff's perspective where this is. We did have public comment at the beginning of the meeting on this, and truly, I think all of us in the community value our advisory boards, as we did celebrate our advisory boards here recently. Interesting to identify that we are, the recommendation is to go back what we had once done, which would be six meetings and five members. And I would agree with that recommendation and perhaps contend that maybe the five members is more efficient at any rate. So, if there's any more discussion on that, and like I said, there's no public, there's no reason to open public comment at this point. So, if... We did have public comment earlier, but I guess we could, first of all, if we're in agreement, we could just make a motion to, for staff recommendation on the rec and park recommendation at this point.
Okay.
And then finally, there's our discussion on the other items.
Right.
And so, that's what I would recommend us do at this point.
I move we adopt Resolution Number 65-17, amending the advisory board bylaws for the Recreation and Parks Commission to reduce the number of commissioners from seven to five and reduce the number of regular meetings from eight to six per year.
Second?
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. McPherson, second by Mr. Davis. Any further discussion on that? None?
Marlis, you'd said that it was in the recommendation. Should we say, should we say that four of those people have to come from Morro Bay and one from Los Osos?
It's actually in the resolution itself.
Is it? Okay, got it. Never mind.
It's part of the resolution.
Got it. Okay.
Good deal. All right, with that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries 5-0. And then continuing on to the proposed changes that were submitted, any further discussion on that? And like I say, I think the other part is there, if there's other thought to this, submit those to Dana, and then Dana and staff would be doing most of the crafting to some point with assistance from the subcommittee on that. Unless there's any specific conversations right now, just looking?
When I was looking at the council policies and procedures, I had to page through. So, I would like to suggest a table of contents.
Okay. Anything else? With that, we would, I don't think we need a motion with what we have. We've got direction and guidance with the items that are listed in the staff report, and we can move ahead in the direction from council. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Okay. So, let's see where we're at. So, Item C3 is concluded, and that moves us on to our final item, council declaration of future agenda items. And looking to my left, anybody to the left? Red? Matt? John? Okay, none. Then, our next regular city council meeting is Tuesday, January 9, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. Just want to say goodnight and happy holidays to everybody, and hope everybody has a Happy New Year. Thanks. Good night.